Okay, thank you everybody for being here and Happy New Year. I would like to call the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to order today January 12th at 7:35 PM. You have the roll please.
Village President Torby.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Diggs. Ford is absent. Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner is absent. Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean present. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the present in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA ten colon four dash six. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the Village website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken. Susan Caljean, Village Clerk.
Thank you. We have one resolution to begin to go into executive session.
Resolution two thousand and fifteen dash zero one, resolution authorizing an executive session at the January twelfth, two thousand and fifteen meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Okay, items to be discussed in executive session, personnel matters are public defender vacancy, fire department vacancy, and new appointments to the seat in Village Committee. Under contract matters, orange lawn Village Hall RFP responses, professional service contracts, and Village Hall update. Do you have a motion?
I move.
Moved by Trustee Levinson, seconded by Trustee Cullen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Back here at eight o'clock.
Wow.
Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order at eight thirteen PM. Could we have the roll again, please?
Village President Torpe.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Still here.
Trustee Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ward.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Still here.
Mr. Lerner is absent. Mr. Rother is away. Susan Calchin, present.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance of Silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, before we get started, a couple of announcements. The first is this year's State of the Village address, I'm very excited to announce, will be Tuesday, January twenty seventh, at seven thirty PM here in SOPAC, but upstairs on the third floor in the loft. Not only will be kind of a discussion and recap of some of what we've been working on here in town and what we plan to be doing the next year, but also a discussion just kind of about the challenges and opportunities in local government and how we think that not only here in South Orange, we're doing such good work as a governing body, as a village, but also how as a community, as a whole, we're doing such good work on so many different issues. So we really hope you'll join us, join everybody on the board, elected officials, public, private sector leaders from around Essex County in New Jersey. We expect a great attendance and I would certainly love it, I know we would all love it for anybody who's watching and interested to be there. If you are interested in attending, please just RCP and you can do that to see Cameron at southorange.org and just let us know that you're coming because seating is slightly limited. The South Orange Health and Fitness Challenge. So this new village-wide initiative starts in just a couple of days, on January fifteenth. A grand prize will be offered for the largest percentage of weight loss over the five months, and I've been told that the program is actually completely filled up with over a hundred twenty people registered in the program, which is incredible success for the first time that we're doing this program in South Orange. So I want to congratulate an initiative already so successful and wish all the contestants in it the best of luck as well, and hopefully not only for the folks that are in it and participating in the challenge, but hopefully, you know, I think what we all hope that this will accomplish is raising awareness just about healthy living in general, whether you're in the contest or not, and that's certainly something that we want to support and that we all want to try and strive for. So as we go and as people check in and make their progress, hopefully everybody can, you know, take a second to think about how they can improve the health of their lives also. The South Orange Public Library will hold an observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day on January nineteenth. They will have an MLK Junior Day of service from ten AM to one thirty PM. And the library also seeks volunteers for our own local history, and if you're interested in getting involved in that, you can email volunteer@sopl.org or drop into the library. On January twenty fourth, celebrating our youth, which will be an MLK Junior Program for all ages, starting at two PM. Also, on Monday, January nineteenth, on Martin Luther King Junior Day, at two PM at Saint Joseph's Catholic Church on Prospect Street, six seven Prospect Street in Maplewood, and that will be the fourteenth annual Martin Luther King Junior Observance. This will include some really great presentations, guest speakers, community leaders. I think I can speak for everybody when I say, I certainly find the service every year inspirational, engaging, so we encourage folks to attend that. That's put on by the Community Coalition on Race, and you can find more information about that at two towns dot org.
Alex, could I add one thing? There's also, in addition to that, they began with sort of initial last year, and then this year they wanted to put it more mainstream, is an opportunity to put out luminaries, candles, and they do it at a small charge. It's a bit of a fundraiser, but it's really to show your support, it's to memorialize, to honor, and it's also just aesthetically really pleasing to put out in front. Basically, it's a little kit of four candles and four paper bags with sand, and you put that in front of your yard, and if you can get your whole block to do it, it really makes a beautiful runway effect, and it's, again, it's as a memorial and an honor, and it's just, it's a nice way of reflecting on the whole day as well. So to pick that up, you can contact the CCR. Also, at the church, I believe they'll be selling them during the, I guess, after the event at two o'clock.
Yeah.
And if you want more information, you can also email the Community Coalition on Race at info at two towns dot org.
Yep.
For any sport and fitness programs at the Baird, just a reminder that there's a lot of great upcoming programming, and if you're interested in learning a little bit more about that, you can go to the Baird dot org or call them at nine seven three three seven eight seven seven five four to get a little bit more information about all the great programs that are ongoing there. There's also affordable classes in visual and performing arts, and that is for people of all ages, and those begin today. So if you'd like, you can register online or in person, and there is a ten dollar discount for South Orange residents with a current rec and cultural affairs ID badge, so you can also find more information about that on the Baird's website at the Baird dot org. So at this time, I'd like to turn things over to the South Orange Village Center Alliance, who will be presenting a little bit about their budget tonight, and also wish everybody a little bit of a belated Happy New Year, and on behalf of the board, hope that everybody's year twenty fifteen is off to a good start so far.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Matt Glass. I'm the Volunteer Chair of the Board of the South Orange Village Center Alliance, the Improvement District for the South Orange Village Center, and I'm here with Bob Zuckerman, our Executive Director, and tonight we're going to review third and fourth quarter two thousand fourteen. We're going to talk about our potential proposed budget for two thousand fifteen and talk about our goals for two thousand fifteen as well. I'm going to start off real quick with a quick summary of who we are. We are made up of a board of directors, of volunteers, and our board has two new members who just joined us recently. Under property owners, it's Matt Wansky from Town Hall Deli, and Steven Pedego, our new resident, but you see our excellent mix of dedicated residents, business owners, and property owners, and also several liaisons with the village, including Mark Packer from SOPAC, Trustee Schnall, Mark Hartwick from the Parking Authority, and Adam Loner, our Deputy Village Administrator. We meet every Wednesday morning at seventy six South Orange Avenue at eight AM. I didn't say every Wednesday, did I? Boy, that would be difficult for us. We meet every third Wednesday of every month at eight AM, and we'll say it once and we'll say it again at the end. Our annual meeting will be February second at seven o'clock at night at Rickleton's. That is open to the public, and it's where we will launch our two thousand fifteen initiatives. So one of our two incredible professional staff is Bob Zuckerman, who's our Executive Director. He's going to take you through our second, third, and fourth quarter two thousand fourteen.
Thank you very much, Matt. Welcome, everyone, and for those who I haven't seen so far this year, Happy New Year. Let's see, how do we do this next? Okay, that should work. So I'm here to do the two thousand fourteen second half review portion of the evening, and we have a lot that we are, that we're very proud of at the Village Center Alliance. It was a very, very busy year. It was my first full year as Executive Director, and I, we're starting off with what we think most people consider to be the highlight of the year, which was our brand new event called Play Day, South Orange, which we held on September twenty first, and this is an event that we believe is going to become the signature event in South Orange, much like Maple Woodstock has become the signature event for Maplewood. We think that we found the right, we found the right formula here for a great outdoor event that happens just a couple of weeks after Labor Day. We had, it's hard to count exactly how many people attend. I'm sure most of you were there. It's, it's hard to judge, but based on ticket sales and other sort of estimates that we heard from a whole bunch of people, we think there are anywhere from twenty five hundred to three thousand people in attendance, and we expect that will even get bigger in two thousand fifteen because the people who weren't there this year heard how great it was, so they're going to come next year as well. We raised over eighteen thousand dollars in sponsorship for that, including ten thousand dollars from our title sponsor, Ride Aid. They were a great partner to work with, and I really hope that we'll be able to get them back on board this year. We also took in nine thousand dollars in ticket sales, and that was for the one ticketed portion of the event for the bounce houses and some of the, some of the rides and things. Everything else was free of charge, and it was just a real great community partnership, and we're very much looking forward to it again this coming year, which we believe the day will be Sunday, September twentieth. We have to arrange with everybody else, but we think that that's going to be the date. We continued our downtown after sundown concert series, starting in Memorial Day weekend, going right through Labor Day.
From the challenges and opportunities in local government and how we think that not only here in South Orange, we're doing such good work as a governing body, as a village, but also how as a community as a whole, we're doing such good work on so many different issues. So we really hope you'll join us, join everybody on the board, elected officials, public, private sector leaders from around Essex County in New Jersey. We expect a great attendance and I would certainly love it, I know we would all love it for anybody who's watching and interested to be there. If you are interested in attending, please just RCP and you can do that to ccameron@southorange.org and just let us know that you're coming because seeding is slightly limited. The South Orange Health and Fitness Challenge, so this new village-wide initiative starts in just a couple of days, on January 15th. A grand prize will be offered for the largest percentage of weight loss over the five months and I've been told that the program is actually completely filled up with over 120 people registered in the program, which is incredible success for the first time that we're doing this program in South Orange. So I want to congratulate an initiative already so successful and wish all the contestants in it the best of luck as well and hopefully not only for the folks that are in it and participating in the challenge, but hopefully, you know, I think what we all hope that this will accomplish is raising awareness just about healthy living in general, whether you're in the contest or not, and that's certainly something that we want to support and that we all want to try and strive for. So as we go and as people check in and make their progress, hopefully everybody can, you know, take a second to think about how they can improve the health of their lives also. The South Orange Public Library will hold an observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day on January 19th. They will have an MLK Junior Day of service from 10:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. And the library also seeks volunteers for our own local history. And if you're interested in getting involved in that, you can email volunteer@sopl.org or drop into the library. On January 24th, celebrating our youth, which will be an MLK Junior Program for all ages starting at 2:00 p.m. Also on Monday, January 19th, on Martin Luther King Junior Day at 2:00 p.m. at St. Joseph's Catholic Church on Prospect Street, 67 Prospect Street in Maplewood, and that will be the 14th Annual Martin Luther King Junior Observance. This will include some really great presentations, guest speakers, community leaders. I think I can speak for everybody when I say, I certainly find the service every year inspirational, engaging, so we encourage folks to attend that. That's put on by the Community Coalition on Race and you can find more information about that at two towns dot org.
Alex, could I add one thing?
Yeah.
There's also, in addition to that, they began with sort of initial last year and then this year they wanted to put it more mainstream, is an opportunity to put out luminaries, candles. And they do it at a small charge, it's a bit of a fundraiser, but it's really to show your support, it's to memorialize, to honor, and it's also just aesthetically really pleasing to put out in front. Basically, it's a little kit of four candles and four paper bags with sand and you put that in front of your yard. And if you can get your whole block to do it, it really makes a beautiful runway effect and it's, again, it's a memorial and an honor and it's just, it's a nice way of reflecting on the whole day as well. So to pick that up, you can contact the CCR. Also at the church, I believe they'll be selling them during the, I guess after the event at 2:00.
Yeah. And if you want more information, you can also email the Community Coalition on Race at info@twotowns.org.
Yep.
For any sport and fitness programs at the Baird, just a reminder that there's a lot of great upcoming programming and if you're interested in learning a little bit more about that, you can go to the Baird.org or call them at 973-378-7754 to get a little bit more information about all the great programs that are ongoing there. There's also affordable classes in visual and performing arts and that is for people of all ages and those begin today. So if you'd like, you can register online or in person and there is a $10 discount for South Orange residents with a current rec and cultural affairs ID badge. So you can also find more information about that on the Baird's website at the Baird.org. So at this time, I'd like to turn things over to the South Orange Village Center Alliance who will be presenting a little bit about their budget tonight and also wish everybody a little bit of a belated Happy New Year and on behalf of the board, hope that everybody's year 2015 is off to a good start so far.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. I'm Matt Glass, I'm the volunteer chair of the Board of the South Orange Village Center Alliance, the improvement district for the South Orange Village Center, and I'm here with Bob Zuckerman, our executive director, and tonight we're going to review third and fourth quarter 2014. We're going to talk about our potential proposed budget for 2015 and talk about our goals for 2015 as well. I'm going to start off real quick with a quick summary of who we are. We are made up of a board of directors, of volunteers, and our board has two new members who just joined us recently. Under property owners, it's Matt Wansky from Town Hall Deli and Stephen Pedego, our new resident, but you see our excellent mix of dedicated residents, business owners and property owners and also several liaisons with the village, including Mark Packer from SOPAC, Trustee Schnall, Mark Hartwick from the Parking Authority, and Adam Loner, our deputy village administrator. We meet every Wednesday morning at 76 South Orange Avenue at 8:00 a.m. I didn't say every Wednesday, did I? Boy, that would be difficult for us. We meet every third Wednesday of every month at 8:00 a.m. And we'll say it once and we'll say it again at the end, our annual meeting will be February 2nd at 7:00 o'clock at night at Rickleton's. That is open to the public and it's where we will launch our 2015 initiatives. So one of our two incredible professional staff is Bob Zuckerman, who's our executive director, he's going to take you through our second, third and fourth quarter 2014.
Thank you very much, Matt. Welcome, everyone, and for those who I haven't seen so far this year, Happy New Year. Let's see, how do we do this next? Okay, that should work. So I'm here to do the 2014 second half review portion of the evening and we have a lot that we are, that we're very proud of at the Village Center Alliance. It was a very, very busy year, it was my first full year as executive director and I, we're starting off with what we think most people consider to be the highlight of the year, which was our brand new event called Play Day, South Orange, which we held on September 21st. And this is an event that we believe is going to become the signature event in South Orange, much like Maple Woodstock has become the signature event for Maplewood. We think that we found the right, we found the right formula here for a great outdoor event that happens just a couple of weeks after Labor Day. We had, it's hard to count exactly how many people attend, I'm sure most of you were there, it's, it's hard to judge, but based on ticket sales and other sort of estimates that we heard from a whole bunch of people, we think there are anywhere from 2,500 to 3,000 people in attendance and we expect that will even get bigger in 2015 because the people who weren't there this year heard how great it was, so they're going to come next year as well. We raised over $18,000 in sponsorship for that, including $10,000 from our title sponsor, Ride Aid. They were a great partner to work with and I really hope that we'll be able to get them back on board this year. We also took in $9,000 in ticket sales and that was for the one ticketed portion of the event for the bounce houses and some of the rides and things, everything else was free of charge. And it was just a real great community partnership and we're very much looking forward to it again this coming year, which we believe the date will be Sunday, September 20th. We have to arrange with everybody else, but we think that that's going to be the date. We continued our Downtown After Sundown concert series, starting in Memorial Day weekend, going right through Labor Day. Over 80 concerts, both two venues, Beauta Park, as well as in front of Sloan Street and in front of the Village Diner. We had some new artists come this year, a lot of returning artists and, I mean, Matt will be talking more about 2015, but we're hoping to tie in some of our businesses more this coming year with Downtown After Sundown, that that's something that we're looking to do. We had another very successful farmer's market this year with some new exciting vendors. We had a New Jersey winery for the first time, other, some other, we have vegan treats, vendor selling vegan treats and someone selling all sorts of, well, basically any kind of nut you can imagine. And people really enjoy the farmer's market down on, down in the parking lot by Sloan Street and of course, that's going to be coming back this year as well. Of course, Matt does an amazing job, as always, leading us in our South Orange Halloween Festival a couple of months ago. This year, we had two sponsors, The Gateway, we were fortunate enough to get them as a sponsor, and we had a whole large number of merchants supporting us and participating more than we certainly had in the past, so that was another successful event that we Here's one that I'm particularly proud of. We all know about Small Business Saturday, it's an initiative that was started by American Express five years ago, this was the fifth year for this promotion around the country, and we did something exciting this year where we had a competition, or a contest, I should say, for a grand prize of $500, but it wasn't $500 in cash, it was $500 in gift cards and gift certificates to our local businesses. So this was a way for people to, for us actually, to invest back in our own community and garner some excitement and it was a freezing, freezing cold day. We had over 230 people come and submit entries. I think Trustee Column spent the most, I had a feeling she had the most number of entries, but she didn't win. But we had, we did give out one grand prize of $500 and then two other $100 gift certificates to two other folks. And all the people who won were actually South Orange residents and it was just a great promotion, very, very successful. We had some of our businesses say it was their best small, their best Small Business Saturday in years. Another great initiative we did as part of our Main Street, New Jersey affiliation, we did a pop-up store in the old Love &amp; Yogurt space at 65 South Orange Avenue. We called it the NJ350 Pop-Up Store because it was to commemorate New Jersey's 350th anniversary. And we had a number of items that were sold that came to us from the state, from the New Jersey State Museum, from our contacts over at Main Street, New Jersey, Department of Community Affairs. We also curated a lot of local artists and merchants and artisans to sell their goods and wares and we just, we just knocked them dead. We sold over $11,000 in sales in four days that we were open. We had over 1,100 visitors walk through the door again in four days. It was the most successful store out of the 15 throughout the state, including some that, some towns and cities that I consider that have really good, solid downtowns. And I think the most exciting thing that we learned from this is that it just confirmed all of our belief and understanding that there is a real pent-up demand here for more retail in our, in our village center, in our town. And this is, the fact that this store was so successful is really going to help us in our, in our business recruitment over the course of the next year. Switch over to the holiday time, we did our usual Santa gathering this year, we brought it back down to the firehouse, rebranded it Hometown Holiday, which brand that we like and I think we're going to continue to use. We had a new sponsor for that this year as well, after Santa was done with the photos, riding up South Orange Avenue to our tree lighting, that was, that was wonderful, we were joined by a couple of our trustees up there. And then this year, we did something a little bit special, in addition to our typical, our typical activities, we added a three-dimensional holiday pop-up card that was down at the gazebo. We worked with, very closely with the Baird and most particularly with Nick Clary, who runs the Interact Theater over at the Baird, and he designed for us this fabulous live pop-up card that families and all sorts of folks, residents and visitors would step into and then have pictures taken during the holiday season. It was just a great depiction of South Orange and we think a really nice addition to our town during the holiday time with all the lighting and everything else that we produce and provide and we're very, we're very glad that we were able to do that. Let's see what's next. Okay, advocacy and business services. So we've been working very closely, our board has, with Trustee Schnall, Trustee Column and others on the scrubbing the code, the whole business code review process, which has not happened, I believe, since the 1980s, I think was the last time that a comprehensive look at our municipal code was undertaken and we're excited that at some point, we hope in the first half of the year, we'll have a whole series of recommendations that will be presented to the board of trustees for you to vote on and hopefully implement and we hope the goal of that will be that it will make it easier for businesses to open in South Orange and more businesses will want to open in South Orange. And so that's a very important thing that we're working on. We continue our, to provide our design consultations to new businesses, existing businesses, the design committee continues to meet. In fact, I just wanted to bring up something, just in terms of 2015, I understand there's going to be some talk tonight about a new grant program, an expanded grant program from the current lighting grant program that we have. And I just want to say that we've talked about it as a board and while we haven't taken a vote on it, it's certainly something that I personally am very, very excited about because I know that anytime you invest in, in the aesthetics of how a building looks, how a storefront looks, that helps beautify our town, that's just a win-win for everybody. So we are, we are very, very supportive of that process moving forward. We distribute our opening a business in South Orange package, which also, once the code review process has been completed, will be completely revamped and we're going to look towards the Montclair model. They have a great whole package of how to open a business, really from soup to nuts and it's right on their website, so you don't even have to physically go there to look at it. And so we're, you know, we're very much excited about that. And then, of course, continuing support for relocating new businesses, such as, a couple examples, Dancing Blunder, which is a great health-oriented food establishment. I think a lot of the participants from the Health Challenge should be stopping into Dancing Blunder. We had our steering committee meeting there.
We did.
To kind of set the stage. And also in fitness, DNI Fitness, which as many of you heard, is opening a new location at the new Gateway. Marketing and Communications continue to, to try to get out the word about South Orange and about our Village Center. We have, I saw Mary Mann is here from Village Green NJ, they're a great new outlet for us to promote some of our businesses, promote our town, in addition to the Alternative Press and some of the others that have been existing. We enhanced our website so that now there, you can click on a page and you see every available space with details in terms of stores that are currently for rent in our, within our district. We continue to post on Facebook and Twitter on a regular basis. We started, I started in May, a weekly newsletter, which is called The Village Vibe, which is now up to 1,650 people on the, on our email list and on a regular basis, at least 500 people open it up and read it, which is an open rate of 35 or so percent on an average, which I've been told is really quite good. And it's just a, kind of a fun whimsical look at what's happening in South Orange and I got a lot of good feedback that people really enjoy reading it. We also maintain the five kiosks and we have, of course, nonprofit partners that come often and want to promote things in the kiosk and we do that for them as well as our own events. And let's see, we, click on to the next one. Business recruitment, now this is something that I'm going to be spending a lot of time personally on in 2015, but we certainly started the process in 2014. Remember Joe Getz from the JGSC Group came here and presented to you back in June, I believe it was, with the findings from the survey, where we surveyed 2,000 people. And as a result of that, we've done three mailings, two letters and the postcard that you see there on the screen. And we've gotten a few people without even me calling up to follow up, who have called us to say, hey, we are interested in learning more about South Orange. This year, what's going to be happening is I'm going to be making personal visits on a weekly basis to a different town or municipality each week to go out, meet some of the, some of the business owners and talk up our, talk up our great town. Continue to try to fill the vacant spaces that are here, obviously Blockbuster being the biggest one, I've heard that there might be some movement there, there's some folks who are seriously looking at it now, nothing I can really talk about, but my goal is that that thing is going to be filled with some good businesses soon. As well as, of course, The Gateway, which has two of its three retail slots already filled, and the upcoming Third and Valley Development will be open later this year, which will have 3,000 square feet of retail, so we're working with, very closely with Paul Woody from Jonathan Rose Company and hoping that we even look to maybe expanding our district somewhat so that we can include the Third and Valley and that, the neighboring developments on Valley Street. Just real quickly, every day, we are still working with Commercial District Services, they're a great partner for us, we love the job that they're doing, they keep our town really nice and clean, seven days a week, every single week, so we're just, we're just thrilled with them. Of course, we continue to serve as an advocate for all of our stakeholders, business owners, property owners, what have you. It's great that we, that Melissa Hodge, my colleague and I, get to work in Village Hall, so we work with Barry and with all of the, all of department heads and have very easy access to them when we need to. Of course, continuing to serve as a resource for other organizations, we're hoping that this year we can become a conduit, have a calendar on our website that we, that we'll be able to host, where other, all sorts of groups will be able to post their upcoming events on our calendar, so we're looking very seriously into doing that. And of course, helping with some of the other events that other, like the Hanukkah event that we had in December and going to Irvington Avenue, Seton Village now, to support them in their efforts. And serving as a spokesperson, spokespeople for everything, everything and anything for the Village Center. And I think that's it from my side and now Matt's going to take you through the budget.
Thank you. I'll try. And I just want to thank Bob and Melissa for working so hard over the last six months. We are in, we are in an even better position than we were at the end of 2013, 2000, and then the end of 2014. We're really primed. At 2015, we will fully hit our stride in our third year. So what I want to do is take you through our proposed budget for 2015, you should have a full version of it that you were supplied and I want to take you through some of the highlights. So if you look at 2014, from our income that we budgeted and our income actual, we actually raised a little more money than we thought, that's mostly because of our sponsorship success and our cash success with Play Day, South Orange. And our expense budget, which you see as 266, 925, actually our actual is 238, 397, which, not being a math major, that's good. And I credit Bob and Melissa and our board. I said to you from the very beginning, whenever I came before you, when we were still in the old building, the number one thing we will do is use the money that you give us and our stakeholders give us responsibly and we have totally done that. Bob has had some great ideas of how to make maximum use of that money that we're going to put into some infrastructure improvements, working with DPW and the village. So we come into 2015 actually in good shape. If you look at our 2015 proposed budget, this is going to be broken down between income and expense. So a couple of things to point out, that assessment revenue, which was, I believe, 55 in 2014, is slated for 64.2. 64.2 is actually about $50,000 less than the advisory committee had recommended we were at, at this time. It was over $100,000. We have felt that we wanted to ease this in for our stakeholders and especially in the last few years with the business climate as it was, but an improvement district is designed to be funded both by the governing body and by the stakeholders. So there is an increase for the stakeholders there, 64.2, which again, when spread across all of our businesses, for many of our property owners and business owners, it's a few hundred dollars for the year. And you see other ways of private donations, our income from events, which we raised, our farmer's market income we raised, our promotional good sale, which I'll show you some of our new stuff that we have. But the other number I want to point out to you specifically is that village contribution, which is $160,075. That is still the majority of our freight. We are still asking you to help us the majority, for the majority of our budget. However, that is a 5% decrease from what we have asked in the past. We are not looking for the stakeholders to take everything, we are just looking to slowly but surely reach a little more of an equilibrium and we felt that you've been so good to us and we are in a situation that we can offer the 5% reduction. And one caveat that when we discussed this at our board meeting is that we're doing this solely for 2015, so as you know, we'll come to you at the end of 2015 and perhaps offer the same, perhaps not, but for 2015, we are confident that we can do just fine and continue to do the good work that we do with a 5% lower contribution from the village. That carryover from reserve you see is actually to pay for payroll tax. We, to be legally correct in it, we didn't want to just add it in, so it is a carryover of $13,000 to make sure that we are reserving the correct money for the payroll tax. Moving over to the expense side, administrative, similarly to the previous years, is our largest expenditure. We are upping advertising and marketing a slight bit and our economic development and services and events and promotions stay somewhat the same. So you know, economic development and services includes the $40,000 that we pay to have the village cleaned every day. And again, that is the same amount of money that we spent before we did it ourselves and it's actually being done better now and we have a much better handle on how it works. So the number, the total number that you see is 287875, that matches both on our proposed income and our proposed expense. As I mentioned, you do have a detailed budget with you that when I finish, we're going to talk about our goals, but I'd have to take any questions about that or we can follow up on any specifics, but the numbers on your Excel spreadsheet should match what you see on this overview. So what are we going to do with the dollars that we are earning from all of our different stakeholders on all over different places? Under the events and promotions world, Bob talked about how well we did this year in 2014. We're planning on expanding Play Day, South Orange, we think we can expand it both physically and financially. We are going to repeat what was successful last year, between Valentine's Day, Small Business Saturday, Restaurant Week, which we had an enormous response from Restaurant Week last year, we're just going to make it better this year. We are hoping to have presenting or leading sponsorship on every one of our events this year, we were very close last year. Bob mentioned Downtown After Sundown and we talked about the potential for growth. We've been doing Downtown After Sundown as kind of relationship with you guys and public safety and we feel that now's the time, and by the way, the other thing you've seen in the budget, we're taking on Downtown After Sundown under our expense on the budget now. We think it's good for the village, we think it's good for our merchants, but we need to expend a little more energy on it. We're going to promote it better, we're going to book our bands a little earlier so we can promote them, we're going to do a better job on signage, we want to make it more of a happening. So we're starting conversations actually now about what it's going to look like starting this Memorial Day. We want to create a new merchant-driven event to make sure that people head into the merchants. We are talking, we did last year, we'd like to try it this year, do at least one late-night event. We want to try to get our merchants to stay open later, at least one day a week and we're going to try it once this summer and see how it works, we'll put some entertainment on the streets, we'll get some other reasons for people to come down. But our goal is eventually that a lot of our merchants find that it's worthwhile to stay open late. They're closing now because they're finding that they're not the customers there. If they find the customers are there, this is, besides our restaurants, we feel that they will stay open. We are, we recently and are in the midst, one of our board members, our new board member, Stephen, is taking us to a visioning project and we talked about who our key audiences are and our stakeholders are and Seton Hall kept coming up and kept coming up and we haven't done a Seton Hall-related event in three years, I think. We're going to bring one back onto the calendar, primarily geared towards the We're going to bring one back onto the calendar, primarily geared towards the incoming first-year students and their families. So expect to see that this fall. The pop-up shop was so good, and I don't think New Jersey is celebrating the 351st anniversary of the state, so we may take it on ourselves and do something similar to what we did this past year with local merchants and some of our merchandise. Expanded sale of the merchandise, which I did bring a little show and tell. So those of you who were there saw some of this branded merchandise. So we have Village Center branded totes.
You need to talk into the mic.
We have Village Center branded.
A little closer to the mic.
Village Center branded jerseys. Sorry. This is when I needed banner. Here's our jerseys. And we also have really nice American Apparel-style t-shirts. We have mugs. These will be available soon at one of our local retailers. They'll also be available online in our office, and we'll start selling it at the farmer's market. My goal in 2015, which I don't think I'm going to, is I really want a snow globe. So we're going to figure out how to make a snow globe and sell it at our pop-up shop in 2015. So if anybody would like one of our pieces of merchandise, please contact us at info@so villagecenter.org. Talk to you about our goals for marketing and design. We are continuing to enhance our website, and we'd like to work with the Parking Authority to make the parking on the website interactive. Right now, if you click on a merchant, you will get a full page of information about that merchant, but parking is kind of static. So we'd like people to be able to learn more about parking through our interactive, both mobile map and website. We want to get to 1,000 likes on Facebook. If you don't like us on Facebook, it's the best place to find out what's going on in town and around town. And as Bob mentioned, our South Orange Village Center website calendar is probably the most robust in the Village. And we right now host any of our events and plus whatever anybody gives us. We've been talking about being the central calendar for the Village, which we would be happy to do. We, what we used to call the lightbulb police, we want to see the Village Center lit. Due to our great partnerships and the generosity of some of our board members, you see all the new lighting in town, the tree lighting in town. We'd like to see all merchants' facades lit at night, and we're going to work on that this year, partially through this front grant, expanded front grant. We want to do increased PR outreach. NJBiz, NJ.com, Radius, which is a glossy magazine out of Newark to promote Newark and its environs, and the healthcare magazines. If you've noticed, you get a glossy healthcare magazine from a lot of the healthcare companies that are in Essex County, and they promote all kinds of healthy living and all kinds of restaurants and shops, and we'd like to be listed in there as well. We want to increase our exposure to the Seton Hall community, both through athletics and on campus. And we've been talking about it for so long, we want a street pole banner program. The banners are there. Seton Hall has done a good job with their street pole banners. We just haven't done it yet, and that's one of our goals to do it this year. So business recruitment and services. As Bob mentioned, we're going to hit our stride with business recruitment this year. It is what his focus is going to be primarily. Using JGSC's great start and our board resources, we want to make sure that every retailer knows that South Orange is a viable option for them. Our goal is to have at least three new businesses open in the Village in calendar year 2015. We have a recruitment kit that is in the midst of being finished, and it will be finished in 2015 and distributed. We are going to refine how we clean the Village. I know there's been discussion as to whether that our footprint expands as to what we clean, but more of an emphasis on Sloan Street after the weekends. And we're going to do litter and snow removal education to our merchants and make sure that our team is not only doing litter, but doing snow and debris, whatever else we need to do, working closely with our partners at the DPW. So overall, we have become, thanks to Bob's leadership, the go-to organization in town if you want something done in the Village Center, done correctly. I think we've shown our partners at the state, when we hosted their statewide workshop and when we hosted their pop-up shop, that we execute very, very well. So we want to continue to do that. We want to continue to mature as an organization as far as volunteers. We need more volunteers in every segment of what we do. And we will be launching a new business recruitment team that we welcome plenty of resident and merchant involvement in. As I mentioned, in 2012, we will continue to manage your money and the Village residents' money and our stakeholders' money appropriately and effectively. And you really earn, you continue to earn your trust because we know that we come before you, we tell you what we've been up to, and then we ask you to support us moving forward, which we do again tonight. But know that the good work that we've done over the past two years will not only continue, but get even better in 2015. And our ultimate goal, which you all share, is that we make our Village Center the prime, walkable, vibrant, diverse, energy-filled downtown in not only Essex County, not only in New Jersey, the state. Everybody who talks to us talks about the bones that we have. Every consultant that comes from out of town says, my God, this is such a great downtown, and there's so much potential here. And in looking at some of our businesses that have been here for five, seven, 10, and then some of our other businesses have been here for 50 years, it can work here. And with things like Gateway, with things like Third and Valley and other potential new development, we are poised that next year, when we come back to you, we will have even better Mr. Report from 2015. So I don't know if there are any immediate questions that you folks have based on our presentation tonight or based on any broad strokes things from the budget, but we appreciate your support. We appreciate honestly the support of everybody in the Village, from the Baird to the board to the DPW to PD and buyer and everybody else. It's truly been a great year of partnership for us.
Well, let me just start off by just thanking you guys for the presentation. And not only the presentation, you know, I think that when we were considering, you know, a couple of years ago, what an improvement district would do for the town, and we were thinking about, you know, the values that that type of organization could provide, I don't think any of us envisioned how successful it could be. And so that's a credit to all of you and all the volunteers on the board and everybody and all the merchants as well. I think that, you know, just some of the events this past year, I mean, they've been absolutely incredible. And I know I get, you know, very positive feedback from a lot of the merchants in town about working with the Village Center Alliance, and that's one of the most important things that I think any of us can hear is when we get good feedback from business owners saying, hey, we like operating a business in town, and we are seeing, you know, more and more people who have businesses, open new businesses, and reinvesting their money back into town, which is definitely some sort of measurement of success in how people interact and how accessible they find getting things done. So I just want to start off with that and congratulate you guys on what I think is, you know, just another fantastic year of everything that you've done. The two kind of questions and comments that I have, and I'm sure there's some others as well. One is, you sort of touched on it a little bit at the end there, but the pop-up store, I mean, it was just such an awesome thing. We're seeing them more and more around. You know, I'm just sort of curious, you know, is there more, you know, what more can be done, you know, along the lines of using underutilized spaces for those sort of purposes?
Well, I can tell you, part of it is our relationship with the builders. Bob has a great relationship with many of them, and especially the velocibators who owned the Love &amp; Yogurt space, who just said, sure, that's great, you know, and literally gave us the keys. So the more that we have those positive relationships, and now we've shown that we can take care of a space and actually leave it cleaner than when we found it, the more opportunities we have to say, hey, this space is vacant. Maybe we can do a pop-up shop for this holiday. Or, you know, part of the reason why it wasn't successful is the calendar. So we have to admit that we got a really great slot from our friends at Main Street, New Jersey, which helped. But it doesn't mean that it can't happen other times during the year. It doesn't mean it only needs to be retail. We've talked a little bit about arts incubators, about if you are, you know, the mural project for the Gateway has these folks doing these giant murals. We have tons of artists in town who I know would love to have a space to work. And if we could figure out how to do an artist co-op that you came in, and it's open four days a week, and we have volunteer staff at, we now have the ability to go out to our building owners and say, we'd like to use your space for this short period of time to do, whether it's retail or art-based or anything else.
And I think we know how much of, you know, incredibly artistic community we have here, but if someone were visiting town and they weren't aware of, you know, what was necessarily happening here at SOPAC or what was happening at the Baird or elsewhere, they might not immediately know, you know, how much artistic capacity and potential there is in this town just by walking up and down the streets. We're starting to see more of that with mural project, things like that. But, you know, yeah, the more there, that seems like an underutilized resource too. The one other question that I had was just as far as the merchants, you know, educating the merchants about snow removal and litter removal and things like that. One educational-type program that we could certainly assist you guys in doing that might help, if this is something that you hear from any of the merchants, is making sure that they all know about and are able to use the SO Connect app so that if there are issues that they have that are issues that we need to fix, or issues with other property owners or anything like that, you know, we talk a lot about residents using it, but obviously business owners should be using it too. So I'd be curious to know, and you don't have to necessarily answer right now, but, you know, how saturated you think the merchants are with that? And if not, you know, we could provide a little bit of information and sit down and talk about the value of it and how easy it is to use. And if you could pass that or a one-pager along to the merchants and get them all using it, you know, that would just help us keep track of what's going on in the downtown too.
I'll take this one. I think that's actually an excellent suggestion. My sense is that the businesses are not as up on the technology, things like SO Connect, as residents are. And so that leaves it up to us to get that information, disseminate that information out to them. We certainly can start at the annual meeting in a couple of weeks, but, I mean, even further and beyond that one time to let them know that that is a tool for them to use as well. So great suggestion.
Do you think it's worth me or one of us coming in and maybe just doing a five-minute, you know, about SO Connect at the meeting?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we follow up on that?
Yes, absolutely.
When is the meeting?
It's February 2nd, Monday night. It's going to be clear skies. It's going to be warm, so. At Rickleton's from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m.
On Monday, it's a Monday night?
It's a Monday night.
Oh, you got planning board. It's Groundhog Day, too, huh?
Oh, it's Groundhog.
No, it just seems like Groundhog.
Yeah.
I just want, you know, I really think, you know, and I was one of the ones who helped organize, I think it's great and I think everything has been great. One of the, the only thing I'm concerned about is on the budget, we had promised a five-year plan of getting to a 50-50 partnership. And we had, you know, a scheduled increase, which you somewhat explained before. But are you still feel you'll be able to get to that 50-50 at the end of year five? Are you saying that you're not going to get to that?
Well, interesting that you say that because trustee Schnall and I have been, we've been talking about the five-year plan on the assessment side. But I have to be very honest with you, the 50-50 that would even out, this is, I didn't know that that was the case. So we should have another conversation about it because, yes, we are looking to do this, you know, to have the village contribution decrease while the stakeholder assessment increases, but I didn't know that the advisory committee had said that it would eventually be 50-50.
We weren't, I can't say we were overly concerned about keeping, about the village portion decreasing, though we prefer to see that. But we actually wanted to see the assessment go up and make sure, because the complaint or the concerns were that there wouldn't be enough money to spend on marketing and recruitment unless the business owners got up to that level that the Village was at. And, you know, and to see it fully, you know, successful. So I don't want to say that you have to keep bringing down the village portion. I'd like to see it come down a little bit more, but over the next couple of years. But I think it's fair that we, that would be the goal. And if you tell me it's going to have to take seven years instead of five years, we just have to know that for, you know, for us going forward.
Absolutely. And I think that's good information as we do.
But I do think that everything else, you know, especially Play Day, which was absolutely incredible day, that there's been a lot more successes than we thought would happen in the first year. It has been far more successful overall than we thought. And even some of the pay payers so much seem to have been much, much more pleased than they ever thought they would be. And I see one of them actually join the board too. So, you know, I'm actually very happy, you know, overall with the, with the progress that is made in such a short time.
Great, thank you.
Any other question?
A few. I just wrote a lot of notes down. With respect to the 50-50, I had pulled up the CIT feasibility study. I think you are providing the worth of what the Village gives to the downtown. We probably under-invest in our downtown compared to other communities, so I'm pretty comfortable where you are at right now. But it would be helpful to at least project out and see kind of what, it's the same thing we ask of SOPAC, like what are you anticipating so for our purposes, we can kind of budget. And even back to the CIT feasibility study, there were changes at the Village the board made that added into their budget more contributions. And in return, we got services. I think we, the business recruiter was added in, more went towards an assistant to assist with events and promotion, more would be put towards recruitment, which was a pretty big priority for the board. But that would be helpful maybe at the next time you present to the board, kind of what you're seeing in terms of the assessments. I think Third and Valley in the assessments will hopefully show us something significant on the income front there and deservedly so. And then where the Village, you expect us to be. And obviously recognizing that's pretty flexible. As Bob was speaking, I took a bunch of notes because he probably played it down, and I did say thank you so much last time you were here, but I'm going to reinforce it. There were so many slides where you didn't even take credit for all the things you're involved with in the Village. I mean, I'm just looking at things I've worked on in the past month, like we're working with the police department on some good behavior citations and reporting on later, and Bob front and center, helping us work with local merchants. Bob was at the South Orange Health and Fitness, you know, meeting to see how we're going to get businesses, not just in the central business district, but in the other business quarters involved. Obviously, the code review that you spoke about, but also as now a member of our development committee, looking at, you know, not just marketing, promotion, and recruitment, but how we're going to continue to redevelop the downtown. So, and I mean, that's just a starting, you know, we throw a menorah lighting your way, you guys are front, you know, matter of hours, you're helping us put an event together, so I can't say thank you enough for all of that. Two more questions. Right now, one of the things that we're doing is we have the townwide rehabilitation designation. It got referred to the planning board, to the board of trustees. Now we have to do redevelopment plans. One thing that I found curious was, in our central business district, the majority of the district is within a redevelopment district. How is that communicated to property owners right now? How do they know that they could take advantage of, say, tax incentives to make physical, structural improvements to their property? Is that something that they're aware of? It was designated a long time ago, so as we move forward with rehab, it just got me thinking like, how do the existing property owners who are eligible know about their redevelopment opportunities?
They may or might not know. Is that, is that the front grand you're talking about, or is that, that's the Essex County?
No, no, actually being within a redevelopment zone.
Okay. And the redevelopment zone, I think, is confusing to some of the merchants and also folks who are coming into town as to what they can or can't do on the first floor and what they're allowed to do. So I think, to your point, part of our education, just like what you were supposed to do on your sidewalk, should be your responsibilities and your rights for being in a redevelopment zone. Does that exist somewhere in an encapsulated, simple way to say what it is?
I think the important word is simple, and the answer is absolutely not. We have, and it's what we're working on within the code review right now, is that there's several maps, there's overlays. Our most recent amendment to the previous amendment to the previous designated zone was done probably this past November. So we have several things going on within that map with the townwide rehabilitation. We have to create redevelopment plans, even though it's townwide rehab, they're not redevelopment zones. So we'll be having Valley, the rest of South Orange Avenue, Irvington Avenue, everyone you can imagine will be pushed into this category of short-term tax abatements, et cetera. But we still have properties that are eligible within our CBD for redevelopment, which is longer-term improvements, other goodies, et cetera, that they could be taking advantage of. So while we're all kind of doing this holistic look at, let's, you know, do big projects, let's, you know, clean up the facades, lighting, front grant, whatever you want to say, like, it's probably going to be a great idea to have something simple outside of the business recruitment that explains legally for property owners and business owners what things they can propose to the Village so we can start getting some even larger improvements within the district. And I know that we've had some new people come in where they probably have no idea what a redevelopment zone is, what that even means for them, if they were thinking about doing something significant and structural to their properties.
Yeah, well, we'd like to help you, the board, whomever is working on it, turn that into plain English.
Yes.
And distribute it however we can. Similar to our opening a business in South Orange document, which is very much plain English and step-by-step, here's what you can do, can't do, but it's very broad. It doesn't mention redevelopment zone. Or it actually probably says, you should check to see if you're in a redevelopment zone because then you'll have certain things that affect you. But we need to know more about it and help you translate it. So I think we're going to add that to our. So I think we're gonna add that to our.
Bob, another working group for you?
Another working group, another night. What I would just add to what Matt said is that I think that kind of, that kind of understanding is gonna require one-on-one meetings as follow-up after we send out a letter that may have a two-page explanation of what their rights are being in a redevelopment zone, because you wanna make sure, A, that they received it and that they understand it. So this could actually be a really good opportunity for us to reengage once more with the various property owners that we have in the, in the central business district.
We offer a lot of incentives, too. I mean, between the discussion we're gonna have with the matching grant program, which is a little bit more facade.
Right.
You know, what people see on the outside, but between redevelopment and rehab, you know, you can do a lot of things to your building and get assistance for it.
And I think with the, with the new program, should it happen, I think that's the perfect opportunity and the perfect time to kind of group both of those, both of those items together and start really getting the word out amongst, amongst the various property owners. Because my sense is that some of them may, like Matt said, some of them may know about it, and a lot of them probably don't.
And I, just if I could, and I'd echo, and I think it's a very good point that trustee Collum makes, is I think that the, the opportunities that are available to business owners and property owners in the redevelopment zone, I do agree, I think most of them probably have no idea what's out there. There's significantly bigger and greater incentives than the fronts program or any kind of little nickel and dime. And I don't mean to minimize those programs, they're important, but I do think that is, and quite frankly, I hadn't really thought of it in that way, but I think it is something I'm happy to work with the Village Center Alliance and with Bob to put together a package. And then I do agree, I think when you get property owners who, many of whom may have owned properties for a long time and don't know what the opportunities are to do something with that property, indoor, you know, prospective purchasers, new businesses, I do think then the next step is really a one-on-one, and I'm happy to participate in that, sit down with those property owners and get them to understand what the tools are available, not only in terms of the economic incentives of tax abatements, but also the flexibility in zoning and in sort of development plan and project approval that comes with, which is, in many instances, maybe even more valuable to a prospective business owner than the economic incentive is, knowing that they have that opportunity to know what their deal is upfront, so.
Excellent.
It's really a good idea, and I'm happy to help in that.
One more item, just when you look at your sponsorship income, and I, I work for a nonprofit also, so I deal with these numbers as well, I know that that's probably just the financial donations you get, like cut a check for $500. But you may wanna look at figuring out a way to monetize the generosity of the businesses who are continuously donating items, running promotions. I bet all in, you probably get $100,000 plus in value from your businesses within your district who are always giving away things, you know, for the different events that you're running, et cetera. And I think that number would make a lot of people just say, wow, that, you know, you've got businesses who are uber generous, supporting the Village Center, if not financially, through time, talent, and donations and income contributions.
Yep, great point.
I too would like to congratulate you on your successful year. But one of the things that we had in the conversation, I would like to see possibly what you would have as capital improvements, like we talked about the garbage cans and what we could help in supporting in some of that capital improvement.
Well, thank you, trustee Lovison. The trash cans for sure, that's something that we've, that we've spoken about, getting, our trash cans in our downtown are quite old, I think they're 16 to 18 years old, something along those lines. They're not attractive, let's face it. They say recycle trash here, put recycle there, put trash here, they all go into the same place. There's lots of issues with them. So we're looking to really upgrade significantly and get new trash cans for the business district, but also ones that have branding on them, because that's one of the things that we wanna do, is continue to get that, as Matt likes to call the meatball, continue to get that, that brand out there, so that this, when you're walking around, you know you are in the South Orange Village Center. How do you know? Trash cans, so, right?
What else I'm looking for is, what you have is a recommendation for capital improvements within the business district.
Other capital improvements. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's sort of the first step that we've taken, because that was the, sort of the quickest and the easiest get that we knew we could, we could go after. But there, but there will, there will be more. Certainly wayfinding is something that we're exploring in a very significant way. You know, we, we find that, you know, there's a lot of, in terms of the parking, there's parking all over the village, people who are coming from outside may not know. I know when I first came to South Orange, when I came for my interview, I was like, oh my God, where do I go? Where do I park? So, you know, now that I'm here, I know it, but not everybody knows it, so.
The other thing to mention is Spieda Park has been on our radar for a couple of years now. And there have been a couple of short starts, and we know that there is other money out there that can help us rehabilitate Spieda. I don't know if it'll be a 2015 accomplishment for us, but that is, when you talk about the streetscapes, Spieda is definitely in that conversation.
It is, something that I've been thinking about, is the possibility of doing some kind of temporary, temporary, maybe permanent, but at least starting off with an occasional pilot program of some sort of public plaza. And, and, you know, Village Plaza next to Spieda Park would be certainly an obvious place to do that. There are other issues involved with that, obviously you could possibly be taking away some parking spots at certain times, whatever, and that has to all be thought through. But it's something that I think towns and municipalities and cities are doing it all around, there's these things called parklets now, that are popping up in the spring and summertime, something that we should take a good, serious look at, because I think it would be a great amenity for, for a town.
I'd like to congratulate you also on your success. And I would just be interested, you know, not that you would have that information now, that in, when you first launched this organization, how many of the stores were vacant? And as a result of your successful year, or two years, especially 2014, has the vacancy decreased and by how much? So that's something that I would really be interested in, because that is a real metric that, that could really talk about the, the success of your efforts.
Yes, we should be able to. We should be able to, we're doing end-of-the-year number crunching shortly for us and for, for our partners at Main Street, New Jersey. So that's, that's some kind of information that we should be able to provide you shortly.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Great.
Thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, so before we move on to any business, I'd like to open up the meeting for public comments. If there's anybody who wishes to speak, we've got one sign up, which we can start with here. And apologize, Joan? All right. So you can just come on up if you'd like, there's a microphone right there. You signed up for public comments?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
But I'm not quite sure what you think of my.
So if you're gonna make any comment, just come up to the microphone there, please. And just state your name and address, too.
My name is Joan Yule, I live at 286 Forest Road, South Orange, and I think I've lived there since 1985. I would like to suggest to the board that they carefully consider granting Orange Lawn Tennis Club any requested changes to zoning, land use ordinance, variances, et cetera. This is the third time that I know of that the club has come before the village with such requests. Each time, there's a threat of financial ruin and the possible sale of the club is one of the reasons for granting their requests. Previous approvals have allowed the club to expand their tennis courts and banquet facilities so that they can continue to operate as a private facility. I must assume that these measures in the past have not resulted in the desired effect of financial stability for the club. The club's existing land use is private open space and recreation. When I reviewed the South Orange's Smart Growth Plan recommendations, Orange Lawn Tennis Club is first on the list for Primary Park Open Space Acquisition and Conservation Easement List. And I think what it says, and if that's what's online, is still in effect, Orange Lawn Tennis Club, the purpose, preservation from development as housing, keep natural areas and distinctive landscape features in open space state, as well as active tennis, swimming, or other recreational facilities. The parcel of land that I believe they are selling is the lawn, and I think it encompasses about three-plus acres. And they wanna develop it for townhouse use. The club is completely surrounded by private, single-family residences, and there are currently, if you probably know, three road accesses to the club. There's the main road off of Ridgewood Road, North Ridgewood, and that entrance is also an entrance to a private home driveway. The secondary entrance is off of Redmond Road, and that road goes between two private and, uh, single-family homes that have their driveway off of that. And the third entrance is on Wyoming, and I believe that's for fire, in case there's, for fire department use, in case there's a fire. Whatever they are requesting in terms of the change in ordinance, I would like the board to consider that when they approved the banquet addition, it was with a stipulation that parking for their facility would be on the lawn of Orange Lawn, and they would not develop other parking. So I'm not sure what will happen if they sell that property and still want to continue a private-use facility for banquets to the public. There are also issues of steep slope, water runoff, and increased traffic in a very residential area. The, any changes in the sell-off of that land would not comply with your Smart Growth Master Plan. And also, I'd like to know what, there is really no give-back to the citizens of South Orange from Orange Lawn Tennis Club. They operate as a private facility, and I'm not sure they extend any services to the residents. I do know how much they pay in taxes, and it's relatively substantial, there are 16 acres of land there. But my fear is, is that they have a continual financial crisis every 10 years or so, and they sell, they, they come to us and ask for variances, they are mostly granted, or there is a compromise made between residents and the club. But if this is gonna continue eventually, maybe the club will have to be sold. No one is, if I had a financial problem, no one's gonna come to my rescue to keep my house in, and I certainly couldn't develop my single-family home into a multi-residential use, just so that I could stay living in South Orange.
Thank you.
Is that enough? I know, this time.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, can you, I tried to find out from the town today, I just wanted to say, I called to find out exactly what they are asking for, and did not get a call back, and could find no information. I know that they gave a, they had a meeting for the neighbors, I was away, you know, right before Christmas, so I was not able to attend. So I'd like to know from you guys what you discussed in your private setting, you know, meeting beforehand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time?
Yes.
My name's Alyssa Arrington, I'm a longtime resident. Good evening, Mayor Alex P. Torpey, trustees, Mr. Bull Raul Castro, dictator. We have a big prob, excuse me, we have a big problem in this township. I have just learned that the mayor of our town does not live in South Orange. He is subletting his apartment and lives in Maplewood. I am going, and I am going to read what it says in the charter. The charter says, 2.3 provocation terms. A, the village president and each trustee must be a resident and legal voter of the village for at least one year preceding the election, of which each person is chosen. We got wind of it right now. We should have got wind of it a year ago. It's time for you to resign, Mayor Torpey, right now. How much longer can they resident this town? Take it. Crowe isn't a stop right now in this township.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Yep, just come on up.
My name is Joe Corb, I live at 291 Redmond Road, I happen to be a neighbor of the club, and I wanted to expand a little bit on Mrs. Yule's comments. I have actually taken the time to educate myself, I understand very well the specifics of what the ordinance first reading is requesting. And I just wanna point out that if the intention is to send it to the planning board, I would urge that consideration be given to some of the merits prior to it, rather than have the planning board essentially look at a project, which at this point seems to be fairly well-baked from a standpoint of density, and therefore would come back to you upon second reading. Seems to me we're getting way ahead of ourselves in terms of the process. The simple question that anyone who just comes to this would ask is, why is a tennis club that has been in existence for 100 years be zoned for multifamily density housing with a strong affordable housing component? Makes no sense. The township documents that are reviewed going back as early as 2004 indicates that in 1993, the town attempted with the PRCB and PRCA zoning to get credit for its Mount Laurel obligations. While the court accepted that premise, they in effect received no credit. So, nice try, but nothing really materially happened. However, because of that designation, it appears as though that the tennis club has used that designation for certain of its financial transactions. The documents 2004, master plan, open space 2007, indicate that this ought to be looked at and changed for private recreational use. Question is, what happened? Why hasn't it actually been changed? From members of the planning board, who used to serve on the planning board, the indication was that they tried to do it, but that the club came in and said, really can't do that, we've got this financial situation, and therefore nothing's been done. So rather than simply say, okay, they're gonna present a 27, 30 unit, depending on the variations, multifamily, or surrounded by single-family that are zoned quite differently to solve the financial problem, which as Mrs. Yule pointed out, is of their own making, I would simply ask that the process be slowed down and that you, ladies and gentlemen, take a good look before you simply send it to the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this time? Okay, so close to public comments and try and address some of the concerns that were brought up. First, the questions about Orange Lawn, we're gonna get to the ordinance, I apologize, that you weren't able to make that, that meeting, but we're gonna get to that in just a few minutes on the agenda, and we'll discuss a little bit of the background and history there. And apologize if we didn't, weren't able to get back to you today if you had a question. If you do, leave your contact information with us now, we'll make sure that, if there are any outstanding questions, you can either ask them at the public comment period at the end, or you can contact us over email, and we'll try and get you whatever you need. So both the comments about Orange Lawn, we're gonna go through those as we discuss that in a moment when we get to that part of the agenda. As for the comments that I don't live in South Orange, I do. And I don't have an apartment, so I couldn't sublet an apartment. The last time I lived in Maplewood was in fifth grade. And, you know, Alyssa, just a, maybe, I don't know, maybe some friendly advice is, I don't know, you know, what kind of conversations you're having with folks that tell you sorts of things like that, but, I don't know, it's certainly your right to come here and voice any concerns and ask questions, as you often do, and I think that we appreciate how involved and engaged you are, you know, with the town, but, you know, there's no truth to that at all, it doesn't really make any sense. It's kinda silly. So anyway, do live in South Orange, legally registered address, and has been since graduated from college in 2009. So why don't we move on to ordinances for second reading? So why don't we move on to ordinances for second reading?
Ordinance 2014, D-22.
Second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend Article 10 of the Code of the Township of South Orange Village to create a new subsection entitled Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs fees and to amend subsection 5-71 to permit the Director of Recreation and Cultural Affairs to create appropriate rules and regulations.
Uh, thank you, so this is the fee schedule for, um, the rec. department, we discussed it a little bit the last meeting, I don't know. Since this is the second reading, we'll open it up to public comment first. So if there's any member of the public who's here who wishes to comment on this ordinance in particular, uh, there does not appear to be. So we can close that public hearing. And unless there are any questions or comments from any of the board members, I would ask for a motion.
I move.
Moved by trustee Column, seconded by trustee Schnall, can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, so let's move on to ordinances for first reading.
Don't you have a, you have a second one?
Oh, sorry about that.
2014-24, second reading of a public hearing of an ordinance establishing the salary range for magistrate and chief magistrate.
Um, another fairly self-explanatory one, unless, um, so seeing this as the second reading of this ordinance, I'd like to open it up for public comment. So if there's anybody who has any questions or comments about this ordinance, and there does not appear to be, then we'll close the public hearing and unless there's any questions or comments from the board, ask for a motion.
I move.
Moved by trustee Davis Ford and seconded by trustee Levinson, can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we can move on to ordinances for first reading.
Ordinance 2015-01, introduction and first reading of an ordinance to repeal the current alarms chapter and adopt a new updated alarms chapter for the Code of the Township of South Orange Village.
Uh, thank you, so this last came from Public Safety trustee Column, I don't know if there's any, you know, quick points you want to make here?
Yeah, sure. This is just clarifying kind of the mess of alarms that's in the existing code right now. It is authorizing a registration of alarms, but as discussed within the Public Safety Committee and Legal and Personnel Committee, there's about a year for people to self-register, so this is not revenue generating, et cetera. We just want compliance and better public safety. Overall, false alarms constituted about 1,300 calls for service and so there are increased penalties that will start at the fourth false alarm. So first, second, and third is a warning, things happen, but by the time you get to fourth, it begins at 100, goes to 150 for the fifth, 200 for the sixth, and $200 for every false alarm after that. Any questions from the board members?
No, I just wanted to clarify, as I said last time, that false alarms will be identified as when they know it was an error by the owner, not when a door may have jiggled and someone may have tried to break in and didn't do it. So it's only when there's a known false alarm that will be triggered as a false alarm. And this was also to give the police better information about the alarms and who has alarms when they go to a house.
There's, there's another thing it does as well. It, it provides that in the event that there's an external noise, a siren or whatever, that within 15 minutes, it has to shut off automatically. And also it gives our police and fire department the ability that if that's not the case, to go and disconnect those kinds of alarms.
I think, I'd just like to add, to put it into context, that these alarms constitute a significant percentage of the police officer's time. I don't remember if it was about a third of their, their time where it, their efforts could be better directed to public safety as opposed to false, false alarms. So that was another reason for this initiative here.
I just have a few comments. It's something that I originally initiated as well, but I think we need to have internal procedures of understanding what data we want to collect, the form, and how it gets recorded within the, the village. It's something that, as well, the police department needs to have a way of capturing the information. I don't think we have put that procedural component together yet.
Now, the, that, that's a, a form that's supposed to be available through the clerk's office and will be, you know, through the village administrator and the clerk's office drafted.
And by the time we advertised in the Gaslight, I think Deputy Administrator Lerner wanted to have the form tied into Property Pilot.
I understand that, but Property Pilot is still not there yet. So do, do we want to say that that will be implemented at the time, that we have the internal procedures established?
Yeah, well, I think, yeah, certainly the procedures, the form, the registration, we can't begin to enforce the ordinance until we have that in place.
Correct.
Certainly before the, I mean, regardless of the effective date based on adoption and publication, it effectively doesn't become effective until we have a form to register people, so.
And people have until registration required, we're allowing up till January 31st, 2016. I know we move slow sometimes, but that's more-
That's for existing, but for, I, I know that there's already been inquiries about registering their new alarms.
Right, so yeah, we, we will certainly move expeditiously, obviously anticipate this will be set for a public hearing likely in the first meeting in February, so we know we have, and then 20 days after publication. So I, certainly I'm comfortable within the next 45, 50 days, we can get those procedures in place, get the forms in place. And, and just as a, a little follow-up, just so anyone in the public understands, the purpose of the registration is not fee generating or otherwise, it's just so that when police or any of our, you know, public safety services, when there's alarm, we currently don't have a database where we can easily go find out who is your company and call the company and have them shut it off or find out what the issue is. And invariably, or frequently, when there's an alarm, the homeowner's not home and so an alarm's going off and we don't know how to contact anybody to shut it off. So that's the other sort of additional objective, I think, of this ordinance.
Just one other comment, can you comment on what's allowable under an open request?
It's not, it's not. The, the, the fact that someone has registered an alarm system with the village will not be subject to an open request.
Fine. Thank you.
And there's case law that supports that-
Yes, absolutely.
And judgments from the GRC.
Yep. Okay, are there any other questions or comments?
I move the ordinance.
Moved by trustee Column?
Yes.
Seconded by trustee Clark? Can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2015-02, introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending the Code of the Township of South Orange Village, Section 92-200.3, 92 point, uh, 92-200.5 and Schedule 1 of Chapter 92, permitted, permitted principal uses for District's PRCB, Plan Residential Cluster B.
Thank you. And considering a couple of the comments from audience members, I don't know if trustee Rosner or Mr. Lewis, if you want to just give a brief couple-minute background of where this has been discussed and-
Orange Lawn, which, which was pointed out before, has come before the town with, with financial problems and in this particular case, the whole property is zoned, can be zoned for multifamily, 6.6 to the acre, I think it was. And, uh, so they've come forth and said that a developer might be interested in buying it, they'd rather only sell off a portion of the property, talking about the front four to five acres of it, approximately one-third of the property, and that they would remain, keep the other two-thirds of the club. And the planning board, we pointed out to them that the parking is a concern, as are the access roads and so forth. But the process is that if we change the zoning, if this ordinance passed, both the planning board, and they get their approval when we pass it on second reading, they would still have to go to the planning board with full hearings for what their proposal is, which last I looked was 27, but they've never made a formal proposal. But we do know they met with neighbors and they talked about 27 townhouse units. That would have to go to the planning board, the planning board would have to make a decision on it, where all these questions about the actual zoning would come up, be public comment, to be professionals, that they would have to provide to deal with the issues of the traffic and so forth. You know, the question probably a lot of us have in the history is, you know, how, how honest are, is the club with, with us? It's hard to know if the finances are really, are as bad as they said, they have not opened them up, the books to the town. But they could, if they said, okay, you know, want to do this, we could sell the whole club. That's the threat that's out there and the question is, do we buy the threat and, and develop the one-third of the, let them go ahead and develop the one-third of the property or at least have considered by the planning board? Or do we look at other methods of zoning for the property or other options for the club? Even if this ordinance passes, it doesn't mean that they are given carte blanche to go ahead and build, because there would be planning board hearings and, and so forth.
Correct me if this is, if this is not the right way to say this, but this is mostly, for the most part, this ordinance is clarifying existing language that already, that already exists, that, that is a little bit vague or leaves some uncertainties open. So this doesn't, this would allow the process to continue, but it would not, it doesn't, it doesn't, like, like trustee Rosner said, this is not an approval of any development plans or anything like that, there's still all those processes.
This just clarifies that, that, that right now, the only thing that we've, we've opened and allowed them to do is to do the one, break it up into two pieces of property, the bottom one-third and the upper two-thirds of the property. And right now, there is no subdivision that allows for that, as far as I know. They can do 15 acres at 6.6 to the acre or, or nothing.
Yeah, the, the current permitted uses on the overall parcel are, one is the recreation use, which is the current club use, the other is the plant residential cluster use at the 6.6 units per. And what was not entirely clear in the ordinance and what I think that's the, the over, really the main purpose of this ordinance is to clarify whether you can have both, meaning can you develop the multifamily on a portion of it and retain the club on the other portion. The obvious alternative then is instead sell the whole thing and develop the entire site based on the density at probably closer to 100 units. And so the, the main purpose of this ordinance is, it doesn't effectuate any new zoning, it doesn't change the bulk requirements with a couple minor exceptions about bike trails, but, um, it doesn't change any of the bulk requirements, density, height, setbacks, buffers, et cetera. It simply says you can have the club on part of it and the multifamily on the other part of it. And that, that's all that this does. And, and as trustee Rosner indicated, if this ordinance were to pass and would become then, they would, they, somebody, some developer, the club, whoever, would have an opportunity to come in, file a site plan application with the planning board. There would be notification, direct mail, certified mail to everyone within 200 feet, as well as, you know, published on the website and the newspapers and full planning board hearings that whatever the actual project being proposed would have to get approved.
I think, I think the only other, you know, question that came from the person in the back was about the, you know, about the past, the past, why we didn't change it to the recreation, back when it was, when it was considered back in, I guess it was '06, '07. And there were, there was some consideration to make the whole property recreation, there were issues mostly doing with their finances and how much money they could borrow. If the land was changed from multifamily potential to recreation potential, it would kill the borrowing and, and the threat was there that the club would, would suffer dire consequences and go under. And again, we didn't know if it was true, but they're, they claimed their intent was to keep it as a club and obviously for the past several years they have, but once again, for whatever reasons, they're, they're, they're in dire straits again financially.
Okay, are there any other, unfortunately, we, we can't get into a, a back and forth right now.
We can't back and forth.
But we, we can't open the meeting up to public comment right now, unfortunately. We're not allowed to do that.
We can't, we can't talk about 22nd week.
So, sorry, so yeah, we, we can't really get into the back and forth at this point.
There will be, there will be plenty of other reasons, times, we'll be doing this again next month with another ordinance and we'll be at, and we'll be at the planning board again, so you'll be able to come back at any one of those two meetings and make any comments you want.
There's the second comment period.
And that's right, right, there's a second comment period too.
We just have to keep the structure of the meeting, so there is another comment period
tonight if there is something else you want to say. And additionally, if you do have questions that aren't answered at any point, if you do leave your information in the questions or you contact any one of us, we'll, we'll get answers back to you quickly as well. So are there any other questions? Okay.
Well, I'd also add to the question about kind of slowing down, it's always tough on the board of trustees because we're so close to things and we're discussing them regularly that it appears that something just came out of nowhere, but Orange Lawn, I believe they first came to a planning and zoning committee meeting several months ago. So there's been at least conversations about what they're looking to do. We've had some good discussion internally about what we think would be appropriate or at least kick off a series of events allowing for the public process to occur. So the first reading then moves it along to the next process, which then, you know, the public is welcome to attend, go to the planning board meeting, they'll eventually come back here, but we have to start somewhere when we're trying to make something happen or at least get some kind of resolution to whatever we're addressing. And that begins with the first reading, which is what we're doing tonight.
Yeah, they, they contacted us in August, we had the first meeting with them in September.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move.
Moved by trustee Column?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Rosner, can we have the roll, please?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnall?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, ordinance 2015-03, introduction and first reading of an ordinance requiring property owners to maintain a safe line of sight at intersections and adopting the state of New Jersey standard for such line of sight.
Uh, thank you. This also, I mean, this is also a fairly self-explanatory, requiring that property owners maintain a better line of sight and empowering us to enforce that. I don't know, trustee Column, if there's anything that you want to add from public safety on that front?
Yeah, this one is actually really complicated, but we, we thought this would be the best way to address it. So we have a lot of properties in our ordinance right now, the drawing, which our traffic bureau uses to address when there's shrubbery at intersections, we've had some accidents, collisions, it's based on a 90-degree angle. So when you're coming to a full stop, it's clear what the line of sight is, where you, where you measure from to determine whether the corner property is compliant. I think the issue that we have, especially being such a unique and creative community, is that a lot of our intersections aren't 90 degrees. You're either going uphill, you're coming downhill, it's a curve. And so the existing ordinance wasn't addressing some of the problem areas, specifically trustee Clark had brought to us in intersection, and trustee Rosner has emailed correspondence going back several years, this was the intersection of-
Lennox Ave and Ridgewood Road.
There are so many of them, Montrose and South.
We pulled some of the data from the police department where there's been consistent accidents and our existing ordinance wasn't addressing it. And there's probably about a handful of other corner properties where we need something more significant within our ordinances to address a public safety issue. So what Mr. Rothe prepared was adopting the state line of sight kind of regulations so that you get into the design speeds, the angles. It is very complicated, but for the purposes of the properties, the village would initiate when an issue was brought to our attention or our police department observed a property that didn't look to be compliant. And then we would use this for the basis of whether or not they were compliant or not or whether they need to come to some resolution on their own property as to how to address it. So, it's probably better than what existed before. It's likely going to need compliance and the support of the property owners to get to where they need to be. And this is the best we could do and it is supported both by the police department, the fire department, and we did sit down with our village engineer to go through this as well.
And most of the line of sight problems are shrubbery.
Yeah.
Not really physical structures.
Yeah, definitely not physical structures. Cause it's, you know-
This one is particularly aimed at plant life, there are separate codes for, for physical structures like fences and et cetera, but this is specifically plant life.
I've never had this problem because my plants always die very quickly. There's nothing overgrown.
There were a couple of instances also where the chief identified that the stop sign, probably she moved to a, closer to the stop line or something, so to speak, so that people don't stop and do the creep completely out into the, to the walkway. And of course, we do have issues with trees also, in some cases, interfering with the sight line, especially on those corners that, that could be 100 intended return and there's a tree there and you can't possibly see past it. There's not really a good answer for that.
You know, I, I've been an advocate for this type of supportive, in support of this type of ordinance, but the, the schedule that's referenced is extremely confusing, and I don't know how anyone can interpret what that sightline is, because it's a function of the speed of the road, distances from curbs. I have no idea how one would be able to calculate where that sightline would be.
The ordinance, the ordinance requires that before the police chief issue a notice to clear, that he must consult with the village engineer. And the ordinance also says that after that, the schedule has to be highlighted for the criteria that applies to that intersection. So that's, that's the way that was addressed in the ordinance.
Are you suggesting it would be hard to be proactive as a homeowner about it?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, have no idea how to do that calculation. And a simple example in, in the ordinance maybe would suffice to help one to determine what the sightlines are.
It actually, it's something the village engineer would have to do with you. He would have to go and draw the sightline for you, which he's done before. But you're right, it could be a problem. But hopefully, you know, that, that in cases where we identify accidents, that we'll send the chief over there to bring a survey from the engineer who identifies it. There's, you know, most times you can just tell, when some, certain intersections are fairly obvious, that they're failing, even under the current guidelines.
Why, I agree with that, but then you would have to go back and use the attached calculations, and it becomes very complicated. It, it's just very confusing.
It's both confusing, in that there are a lot of numbers attached to it, but there's also an inherent simplicity in it, in that the line of sight is the issue. It's not just a mathematical formula, it's whether or not you can see on a given angle.
But the point being is that...
So that's the basic simplicity of it, is at the same time.
You may claim that you have a problem with line of sight, but not in fact, the calculations show that it is a problem, because it is a function of speed as well.
Well, that's why it's based on design speed.
Yeah.
Like, right now, it is very simplistic, but it's not doing what we needed to do, to measure 25 here, 25 feet here, 10 here, draw a diagonal. We still have the intersections where it's...
I'm not in disagreement. It's just...
I don't know what the alternative would be. And this is more reactive than proactive, because we know exactly where we need to go, and why the existing ordinance isn't addressing them. And right now, it's at a kind of critical public safety heightened level, because we are seeing the accidents.
Oh, I don't disagree with that.
Repeatedly. And we need something on our books to be able to address it, other than saying, can you do something?
I think this will always be a reactive type of measure. You know, this is not something you'll go out and do surveys and determine that, oh, we need to address this. It'll be reactive.
And for any corner property, I mean, you probably know your property well enough that if you're in your vehicle next to it, and you have to drive out into the middle of traffic to see what's coming, it's probably good, like, you know, just check the pulse, like, is this dangerous? If you've seen 10, 15 accidents in front of your home, that might be the indication that those shrubs or the trees need to be trimmed back or removed. But right now, we're not going to put drivers or pedestrians in a situation anymore where they're facing those intersections, and we don't have, you know, a mechanism to go after those properties for some level of compliance for line of sight.
From a practical perspective, the way it was discussed with, with the, the police chief, is that if, after giving the, the notice and that, and that form, with the particular speed highlighted and the criteria, if the property owner goes out there and takes down the offending plant life, and the police chief goes back and looks at it, and indeed, he now believes that there's more than adequate sight at that intersection, nobody's going to go and ask for a survey. However, in the event that a property owner does not do it, there's provision in the ordinance that the village will secure a surveyor to plot that line, and our public works department will remove the offending plant life, and both the removal cost and the survey will become a lien on the property. But it's a very practical way of noticing the property owner, he's got a problem, to do something about it. And if it's a, a reasonable clearance of that plant life, nothing further would be done. It's only in the event that the property owner wouldn't take action.
Understood, but how will we be looking at these intersections? Is it based upon residents making complaints about a particular intersection, and then we would have to go out and research it?
It's, it's when the, the police chief determines, that's what the ordinance says, when the police chief determines that's, there's a traffic hazard at that intersection. It's in his professional judgment.
We've already identified some intersections based on accidents. So the police chief and the engineer said, there's nothing we can do, they're meeting the requirements of the ordinance. Thus, we change the ordinance, and it allows the police chief and the engineer to go back and say, we have to do this, there's too many accidents at this intersection, we have to make improvements. So that's, that's the simplicity of it.
And maybe there's a little bit of educational kind of outreach that we could do. Maybe we could take some photos, or do a little like, quick video or something, just kind of showing like, hey, this should be common sense, but here's, we're standing in an intersection, like we're, we're in a car, look this way, you can't see any cars, you can't see the street, this means you have to trim your shrub. Like, maybe there's like a little bit that we could do there, just to find people to take better care of their properties?
I'm concerned that we're going to have an influx of South Orange SO Connect complaints about intersections, and we'll be running out looking at all of these various intersections to see if they comply with the, with the ordinance.
That's what, that's what happens now.
Yeah, I mean, it happens now.
And we had no enforcement mechanism.
Yeah, if someone, if someone makes a complaint now, the PD has to go out there with that diagram, and they, you know, they get out tape measures and drop string, and they measure it all out. So it's, it's not any different from that regard, that...
Yeah, and I would, I would think that we would want, I mean, first, and what, ultimately the problem is, the current ordinance is based on a 20-whatever feet from the corner. Doesn't take into account either the geometry of the intersection, it assumes they're all perpendicular 90-degree angle, and it doesn't take into account the speed of the vehicles on the...
Correct.
...the crossing road. So the intent of this and the state standard is, it takes into account the stopping distance, and how far, you know, based on how fast cars are allowed to be going on that cross street, how far would they need to be able to see, and you need to be able to see them. And then by drawing the line from whatever that point is from the intersection, based on the speed, and connecting that line to where the stop sign is and where the vehicle stopped, that, that component of it then addresses the geometry of the angled intersections, and where we have these points that stick out that block it. And, you know, so from that point, I think, once that's in place, I do think we, I think we have an obligation to respond to any complaints. I would hope that anybody putting in SO Connect that they're legitimate, good faith complaints, because residents have sat at intersections and seen that they can't see, or they have difficulty pulling out. So I would think we would want to investigate them. So I think it's going to be a combination of residents raising the issue, and one would hope it would be also proactive from our own police, who are out there driving around 24/7, 365, that they would come up to stop signs, and, you know, we all know where they are, and you pull up, and then you inch up some more, and you inch up some more, and pretty soon you're halfway out in the intersection. So I, I think it's a combination. But I, I think that, you know, the risk of sort of spurious complaints, I guess that's the risk we take, in the interest of safety and making sure we address. But I would hope that the overwhelming, if not unanimous, majority of the residents are only going to report legitimate issues that most people would sit at and agree. I, I think it's, that's what we have to do. So I, I think, and again, when the engineer can plot out based on the speed, it's, I think the chart even gives you the distance of how far back.
It does.
And then you draw, and once you've defined where the stop sign is, I think Sal and with the CAD system, you could relatively quickly draw the line. And hopefully, again, the whole intent of this is to be constructive, it's not punitive, it's not to generate fines, it's to protect public safety. So obviously, the intent would be to reach out to the resident, you know, and, and have a dialogue, explain, show them the diagram. I suspect most of them probably drive at the same intersection, probably know it's an issue anyway, and, and, and obtain voluntary compliance without being punitive, so...
I move the ordinance.
Okay, moved by trustee Cullen?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Schnell. Do you have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cullen?
Yeah.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Thank you.
I move that ordinance 2015-01, 2015-02, and 2015-03 be scheduled for second reading and final passage at the February 3, 2015...
February 9.
February 9, 2015. Thank you. Board meeting and a public hearing be held at that time for the reference ordinance. The village clerk is authorized to take the necessary actions to publish public notice for such hearing.
Moved by trustee Davis Ford?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cullen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Next, I have one appointment to make, which is 2015-VP01, which is the appointment of Carolyn Moan as a regular member to the South Orange Historic Preservation Commission. Next is our consent agenda.
Okay, resolutions 2015-02 through resolutions 2015-017 are on the consent agenda this evening.
Before we begin here, I would just ask that we take 02 and 15 and do them separately. Just usually when we're doing resolutions of that kind of nature, we just usually do them as a separate action. Is that okay with everybody?
Which two?
02...
Pipeline.
Which is a pipeline, pilgrim, pipeline, and...
15.
15, which is a very long title. So we'll, so we'll do those separately after the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comment? I know one thing I wanted to make sure to note was, where's the police one?
15.
15.
Wait, 15-07.
07, yeah. On that this is just infilling a position that someone had gone to the academy and did not complete, and this is just the next person on the service list from there.
Exactly, yeah. And also, 2015-09, only because of the sort of significance and importance of it, either would warrant some discussion or perhaps separate action.
Yeah, we, yeah, why don't we do that, too?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to pull up.
Which one is that?
09.
09, and you're the American Water. Are there any questions or comments on any other consent agenda items? So do I have a motion for all the items minus 02, 09, and 15?
I move.
Moved by trustee Cullen?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Levinson. Do we have the roll, please?
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Cullen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. All right, why don't we start with 02?
Resolution of the township of South Orange Village opposing proposed pilgrim pipeline.
Trustee Clark, do you want to say anything here? Any free comments, or?
Let's see. Well, this came to us by Assemblyman Keen, and I have done a little research on the, the background on this. For those of you who are unaware of it, there is a proposed pipeline, which is intended to carry shale oil from up around the Albany area, down to Linden, New Jersey, where the refineries are, and then to send, it's, so it's bi-directional, and then to send refined petroleum products back, so gasoline, kerosene, et cetera. There are a number of communities in New Jersey which have already passed resolutions against this pipeline. South Orange is not directly affected by this, in that it is not proposed to go through the physical territory of South Orange. However, there are some indirect concerns as this does go through the Highlands, which some of you may or may not know, is the watershed for about half of the population of New Jersey. It's, it's just the way the state is configured. And so there, there is an indirect concern in terms of any time you're, you've got, you know, petroleum products, products running around in an area like that. In this particular case, the plan, such as I've seen, is to try to use, sort of run the corridor of Route 287, and use, for the most part, existing rights of way. However, there are a couple of spots where they would have to do some completely new areas, and they just happen to be near, say, the Ramapo Reservoir, and things like that. So there, there is, there is concern over any time you're doing something like this. It's not as though New Jersey is without chemical pipelines at this point, but it is also not as though adding more would be an improvement. I, I, the argument, I think, from a business case scenario, is that a pipeline is a more efficient way to move petroleum products, as opposed to, say, a barge. And if you go to the Pilgrim Partners website, they'll, they'll tell you that barges are less safe. That's kind of an apples-to-oranges comparison, though, because if you go to the American Petroleum Institute's website and look at their comparison of ways to move oil around, pipelines do about 70% of it, and actually have considerably more gallons spilled on a given year, because they are moving more, and they have more spills. So proportionately, a barge might be slightly more likely. However, the, when you have a screw-up on a pipeline, it's a lot faster and a lot higher content. So that is probably more detailed than you may have been interested in.
No, it's actually interesting, because I was curious of, of the alternatives, as you pointed out. I mean, so the question is, the, the pipeline is the most efficient, so if we're looking to move...
The most efficient if you want to move, yes, a lot of fracked oil. But to me personally, it's encouraging fracking, because that's where this is all coming from, fracking in North Dakota. And not really a big hurry to encourage that either.
Okay. No differenties, though.
Okay, thank you. Detailed explanation.
Just a question, is, is there kind of, in your research, did you find kind of an objective place to look at the pros? It's very seldom, one thing that always concerns me is when we're commenting on things that aren't directly within, like, we're calling for a moratorium within Morris County, so I...
To be honest with you, it was hard to find an, an objective. I don't know that there is any group out there who's takes middle ground on such issues.
Going to give you fair analysis.
So, yeah, yeah, obviously, if you go to the Sierra Club website, you'll get a pro-environment point of view of it, and if you go to the pilgrim pipeline site, you'll get a pro-pipeline view of it. So try to compare the two, I mean...
Do we have any advisory committees or anything like that, that have chimed in from environmental commission or anything?
No, I don't know that we have an advisory committee that would handle such a thing.
Do you know, in, in, in terms of using the existing rights of way, where there already were channels built, specifically along 287, the, you said there's a few instances where those were not, would not be able to be used, or they needed to go around it, is...
I don't know the, I don't know the details on that. From what I understood and looking at some articles, it's, it's not a done deal, they haven't gotten agreements from, for instance, PSENG necessarily to use their, their lines, but that was their plan. In New York State, they're looking to use the, the throughway, and stay within the, I guess, the right-of-way of the throughway for part of it as well. So, I mean, they're trying to find the easiest path, which makes perfect sense, but I guess there are some areas where they can't.
Yeah, this is tough, just because obviously we're balancing, there's still, you know, energy needs and, as well as commercial, not just our own usage, but New Jersey happens to refine a great deal and use, that's why it's going bi-directional, it makes sense. I, I am concerned about what the alternative would be, if they still want to do that business, you know, what, what's the alternative?
They would, they'll do what they do now. The barges.
Yeah, well, and, and so, again, if they're trying to get to that volume, though, they would, again, my concern is that then start increasing the number of barges, which has a different, and a sort of an alternative impact.
It was interesting, I read something on their website that said that the demand for oil has not changed, and that was part of their rationale for why it, it, it was safer, in a strange way. And I couldn't help thinking that if the demand hadn't changed, then why build a pipeline? But I, I presume somebody's done the numbers in their business to figure out that pipeline would be more efficient, and it's worth it to spend the money to build a pipeline, if you can move the, you know, same amount of oil. But they didn't seem to be, you know...
When, when does this come up for a vote?
I believe it is supposed to be voted on in the New Jersey Senate in January. I don't know if it's on schedule, but...
It is.
So, the reason we put it, we just, we put it on here to vote on it?
One of our local Assemblymen is, I believe he's the primary sponsor on this, so he's coming to us for support. And I kind of end up with, you know, it's, I think every great organization creates sample resolutions, I know it, and then they send it out to every municipality to build momentum, to stop the bill from moving through the state. Because this is in Morris County, and not that I don't empathize or anything like that, especially if it has an impact on our water, I wouldn't want to chime in on a statewide bill until we actually know exactly what it is, its impact to our residents, and just a little bit more due diligence, because all the whereas clauses are, it's bad, it's bad, it's bad. I'm not seeing the alternative in here, and the actual be-it resolved is calling for a moratorium, and that we're opposed to it. And that's pretty strong language for a town that just hasn't been very involved with this discussion to date. And like a lot of resolutions, we could probably take some of the things that there's common ground on, and within the be-it resolved, you know, expecting the DEP to do an assessment of environmental consequences is a no-brainer. Of course, I would hope our state agencies do that on projects this big, but as written, I think it would probably be wise to hold off a little bit on it, and at least have one of our advisory committees or standing committees make a recommendation to the full board, because, quite honestly, other than the resolution and quick Google search, I've done no real due diligence on it.
When was the, what's the timeline that we're looking at as far as, at what point this would, you know, passing this would be not worth doing? Do we know?
Again, I believe that it's voted on during January.
It's coming up.
It's coming up this month.
Howard, do you know anything more about this resolution?
Well, I don't think it's much different than what's happening with Keystone. In general, it's your philosophy of thinking about the need for more oil being pumped through the system. I think there is environmental dangers of the pipeline having a problem in our watershed. That's one of the reasons that I would be opposed to going forward with the pipeline.
Yeah, I mean, it's significant that the towns that are, that have the pipeline running through it are lined up against it.
As we would probably be if it was running through our town as well.
I think we've found enough time on an issue that doesn't directly impact us, so it's like, it has no budget impact, no direct impact on us, and it's just more of a personal feeling about it, you know? It's like some of the other resolutions, so if someone wants to move it, I move it.
Moved by trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Clark. We have the roll.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
I'll vote yes, because I know my colleagues feel strongly about it.
Trustee Schnell?
I'll abstain.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
I'll abstain as well.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next was 9.
Resolution approving a commodity demand agreement for the purchase of water from New Jersey American Water Company and authorizing its execution.
So, this is certainly a significant one. I don't know if Mr. Rothen or any, either one of our two trustees have been most deeply involved, want to give a little bit of a introduction recap right now about it.
We've negotiated this contract for some considerable period of time. It's a very important contract, because it has a term of 30 years. But it is also a very flexible contract. We were able to negotiate a number of provisions into the agreement that gives the village a lot of flexibility. And the amount that we have to buy is very flexible in that we have two years, the first two years, to adjust the amount, and the amount can be adjusted quarterly. We, of course, have two years in advance of drawing the water to begin to address any water losses that we have, so that we're even getting a head start on that two-year period when we can fine-tune the amount of water that we need. The other very critical flexibility is that we still have the option to sell the system, because this contract would be assignable to anybody who would want to buy the system, so that we have the ability to stay in it and adjust the amount of water we're buying. And by the way, we're buying it at a price that's determined by the BPU, because this is a regulated provider of water, so we're not at their mercy for the cost. BPU fixes the cost. And then, of course, we have the flexibility that if we ever wanted to sell the system because continuing to operate it is not to the advantage of the taxpayers and the users of water in the village, we will have that option.
It is a volume-discounted bulk purchase of water. It's what's called a take contract. We have to buy that volume continuously. What it does give us is a base of consumption that we will always have. We brought it down to a level that this is what we can buy at a very discounted rate. There are other contracts that we will be looking for which supplement that contract, which is a demand-based amount of water, and that demand basis basically varies from time to time depending upon, most likely, the seasons, summer and winter, or if Seton Hall is in session or not. So, we can have another contract that will adjust itself so that we can now adjust what those levels are. The other part of it is, is that we have a significant amount of water loss in the system, either between 40 to 50%, which currently we don't pay for. In the future, if we had a bulk contract, we would be buying it and then distributing it, and we would have to be paying for that water loss. So, in the short term, what we're looking for is, again, to investigate where the water losses are, to see if we can improve from the 40 to 50% to industry standard of maybe 10 to 15% water loss. And that involves both finding leaks or understanding if our meters are calculating the amount of water being consumed properly. So, there are a number of initiatives that go along with this bulk purchase agreement.
There's another very, very important element, is that the interconnection, which is going to involve more than a mile of some very large water mains and a pumping station that will have certain redundancies. There are going to be three pumps in it, so that we're going to be assured at all times that there's enough pumping capacity to keep our system charged. There's going to be redundancy in that there will be an electric generator at the pumping station, so that if power goes out for any lengthy period of time, we will still have water throughout South Orange. And all of the cost of that interconnection is going to be assumed by New Jersey American.
I'd like to move the resolution.
Okay, moved by trustee Schnell.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Rosner. We have the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Trustee Column?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, resolution 2015-15, resolution affirming the commitment of the Township of South Orange Village to advancing social justice and reciprocal respect for all people and recognizing and commending the South Orange Police Department on its record and continuing commitment to treat all persons with equality, dignity, and fairness.
Thank you. I don't know, trustee Clark or trustee Davis Ford, if there's anything that you want to add. I know you guys were working on this a little bit.
No.
I was afraid you were going to ask me to read it.
It was a long document. I just have to say that it was just incredibly wonderful working with trustee Clark on this initiative, and he did a lot of the heavy lifting, and I also liked the fact that he made sure that this was sent out to everyone involved, all the trustees. We even engaged the police department to get their feedback. We engaged the Coalition on Race to get their feedback, and I think that we ended up with the type of resolution we were looking for when we rejected, is a strong word, decided not to move on the resolution initially presented to us at a Board of Trustees meeting a couple of months ago by CCR. And this hit the right balance, and our real objective, it was to talk about the things that have happened in the other towns, Ferguson and New York City, but also really have a look at the incredible job and the record of our police force here in South Orange, which is exceptional, and then have some action items of what we were going to do moving forward, to create and build upon the great community that we have collaboratively with all stakeholders. And trustee Clark, you were the driver on this, would you like to add anything to this?
Yeah, I would just like to thank you, obviously, for starters, but also thank the rest of the colleagues on the board for your input. And this was obviously a very emotional thing for many people on many sides, and so I realize it was difficult to address in many ways, but I thank people for their candor and for their forthrightness. Trustee Column, also for working in public safety on this one. And I would like to thank both the Coalition on Race for their input, as well as for our police department for being very open-minded and for working, well, Sheena's going to get into it later, but we do have some good initiatives that we are able to work out with them, and I'm looking forward to instituting.
And I would encourage everyone to really read the resolution, and I think that it would resonate well with almost anyone in the community.
Nice to read.
Is the CCR pleased with the work then?
I understand, although we apparently outlasted them.
Yeah. They were here, whatever, but I attended a meeting this Saturday held by the CCR, and it was more of an informal gathering to welcome new, eight new board members to the board. They have a robust board and incredible new members, and near the end of the meeting, this resolution was discussed. They had an opportunity to read it with our transparency online, and they were very excited and pleased, and they did send some representatives here, but it's now 10:30, and it couldn't outlast the length of our meeting and our discussions, but they are very pleased, and it's very seldom that you have so many stakeholders, and you can work collaboratively together and come up with a consensus on resolutions such as this. So, in answer to your question, they are very pleased.
I'll just add one more point. While I didn't like the initial resolution that was introduced, I think it forced all of us to think a little bit about kind of the core of the message that they were trying to encourage in the communities, even if not written in the way we thought was most appropriate, because I know as Public Safety Committee Chair, working with Walter, trustee Davis Ford, we've sat down with our police department, looked at community relations, looked at the relationship of law enforcement, especially with youth in our town, and we're going to be announcing a lot more new programs for 2015. And had they not brought that to us and asked us to think about it locally, because, you know, watching around the country, knowing that we do a good job here, it just kind of, you don't think about it, and I think that their presentation at least forced us to think about not only what we currently do, but how we double down and make sure that we keep doing it. So, I do thank them for that, and I move the resolution.
I second it.
All right, moved by trustee Column and seconded by trustee Davis Ford.
You should have left.
We have the roll, please.
Come on, move. You want to be sitting like Clark?
I'm willing to vote.
He moves it.
Can we do that?
We have the roll, please.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
He can vote twice for me. No, I'm kidding, yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. All right.
We have a resolution for separate action, resolution 2015-18, resolution authorizing temporary appropriations for calendar year 2014.
Unless there's any questions or comments, or a motion.
I move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Rosner. We have a roll call, please.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Column?
I'm sorry, I'm confused. What was this last one for separate action?
It's a temporary budget.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levinson?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Trustee Schnell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. All right, why don't we move on to our trustee reports?
I thought you were going to do a best of recess.
All righty. Okay, so, would you like me to start?
No. It's a loaded question.
You may start.
All right, I will move quickly, because I know it's late.
Could you start the timer, Mr. Administrator?
All right, I'll hold them side by side. So, we already covered both the alarms and the line of sight. Thank you for your support on that. This one's exciting. So, what I had just referenced a moment ago is that in 2015, for the first six months, we're going to be piloting a new program with the Community Relations Department in the Police Department, specifically Sergeant Adrian Acevedo had a great meeting with us, and we are going to be putting out a press release for a new initiative called Good Behavior Citations, where our local law enforcement will be issuing summonses for good behavior to youth in the community. And we've got some really good partners on this. We have Cold Stone, a lyca cup with a mix-in. That's serious. And we also have Pirates. For the people who don't like ice cream, we wanted to offer something else as well, and it's going to be a slice of cheese pizza. And it's really cute, because the officers are going to have like a booklet, and on one side it says, you know, you've been issued a good behavior citation by the South Orange Police Department. There's a few lines for, there's a few lines to indicate what it was that they observed, and then the officer signs it, and then for the kid, they can show that to their parents, and then the other side is a tear-off where it entitles them to the lyca cup or the pizza. And so, there's a total of about 500 of these. Again, a pilot program, we'll see how successful it is, but that should take us through the end of June, and so I want to thank them for that. Next, after that, is also a program that we learned about, because West Orange is doing it, is Coffee with a Cop, and it's basically local coffee shops, they invite the community to come meet the officers. Again, just building a stronger relationship between residents here and law enforcement. So, we're going to work with Neighborhood Watch and the local businesses, and we're anticipating, at least for this year, doing them quarterly. That's on top of the neighborhood meetings that we do when neighborhoods request them of community relations. So, we're looking at March, June, September, and December.
I want to jump in and say, one of the key elements of Coffee with a Cop is that, as opposed to being geared towards youth, it is geared towards adults and residents. And the idea is that typically, when any of us interact with the police, it's, you know, on our worst day, you know, something bad has happened, and so this is not the best time to start a relationship. So, the idea is that people will be able to come in a relaxed setting and meet their local police officers, and also ask them questions and get to know them a little bit, and that way, everyone is not a stranger when, you know, the bad thing, knock on wood, does happen. You've already got a basis with this person, and hopefully things go more smoothly as we resolve.
I love this one. You know, this is one of the initiatives I really love. I think that this is where we can really just grow, building relationships so we know each other, because most people don't know our safety officers and vice versa. I love this one.
Next, and the next three are shared between a few committees, so I'll ask trustee Levinson if there's anything, or actually, first trustee Clark, if there's anything to add. We had a police headquarters update with our architect. The meeting was held on January 9th. Right now, we're at a point where we've reviewed the preliminary phasing plans. I brought a copy, if any of the trustees want to see it. It's a total of six different phases. If you recall, the goal was to not have to move any of our officers into trailers or temporary offices, is that we could do all the renovations within the existing footprint just at different phases, not to ever have to displace anyone. We should be receiving some cost estimates within the next couple of weeks, and we did provide, we asked the architect to provide some pricing or get an idea on what it would take to get the building up to a lead silver status. Some of our planning board members and environmental commission members had asked about creating an ordinance to require that all municipal property and all new developments have some kind of benchmark, and as a result of that, we might be introducing something to the board in the term, in an ordinance, but in the interim, this is a project we have going on right now, so might as well see what the possibilities are for that. Next is the CAD RMS update, and Trustee Levinson has done an incredible job with this. So, just for the bullet points, is that the renovation work on the communications room began on January 8th, and that at our last meeting, our consultant does an incredible job, I'm just such a big fan of his. But we are running low on the hours, and so we're anticipating a need to get additional hours out of him, looking at roughly 50, and you could set that up as a not to exceed, but we obviously would like to have him continue working with us to finish this project, and we've also asked for his assistance in working with also the Public Safety Radio Communications Project. Howard, do you want to add there, or do you want to throw it under your report?
Well, I have the items in my report.
Okay. And then, the radio communications update also is, they're currently testing Harris radios in the Police Department, and after that, the Harris radios, they've already tested the Motorola ones, Motorola ones are a lot more expensive, Harris is a little bit cheaper, so right now they're testing those. Hopefully, that'll be done in two weeks, and then they're going to turn it over to the rescue squad, and also to the fire department, and there is no word yet on the grant application that we submitted for the fire department. But again, this is going to be a very, very significant capital budget item if we move forward with it. I'm going to skip over register ready, I'll report on the next time. Business code review, as Bob Zuckerman referenced, is that we've brought this up a few times, Mark has brought it up under planning and zoning, I've brought it up under code review, is that we really need direction from the Board of Trustees on this one, because we've got volunteers working on the ordinance to create the design review board. One of their roles and responsibilities will be overseeing this matching grant program. As you may recall, I sent out the draft of the things that would be eligible. It was anything that was pedestrian or vehicle-facing, it's the lighting, it's the signage, it's the awnings, it's things that make your downtown and other business districts look pretty. So the recommendation was $25,000 for year one, which could get us up to, well, it's a matching grant, up to $2,500, but they're not all going to be that, but we could get at least 10 projects off the ground between all three business districts, and we do need direction on that, so I am going to ask for either board's blessing on it, or you don't want to do it, but we need something to move forward with so we can introduce something to the board. So, again, I think all of our advisory committees have recommended it, we talked about it briefly in the budget workshop. Is there any objection to allocating $25,000 in year one for a Great Streets matching grant program for the town?
There was no objection, I just know we wanted Barry's input on where I was going to impact the budget, if there was room in the budget.
It was included, it was included in the first draft, correct?
And is there an expectation of significant increase in success of years?
It's really what the design review board, because that's being handled by volunteers, design professionals, but it really is how much they can handle. They didn't know what year one, we have no baseline, because the fronts program was very limited, whereas this opens it up. And the really cool thing, which, you know, thank you to SOFC again, is they are going to dissolve their design committee, their SOFC design committee, and it's going to turn into the townwide design review board. So it's going to service and provide technical assistance to all the business owners throughout the entire town. And that's, you know, fantastic that they were willing to do that with us. But right now, without a benchmark, we have no idea how successful the program will be in year one. But we are asking for the 20, I want 50, but I negotiate, well, 25,000 for year one, and then we'll have a baseline of, you know, what we want to do moving forward.
I wasn't even sure if we had the capacity to do any more anyway, in terms of how much time it takes the design committee, which is really just two people working on it, to do it, and how many, you know, the timing that it takes them. But I'm fine with the 25,000, I want to bring back the grants program. I think in future years, I think this is really more of a catch-up, because we had it, and we stopped it for the last three or four years. I think 25,000 catches us up, and then I think in future years, it will probably be a lower amount needed, because we won't have the same issue again, as long as we consistently fund the program. So, you know, future years, maybe 10 grand a year, or 12, 5 grand a year, to get us four to five. So I think we should think of it in those terms.
I'm okay with that. So, if I'm hearing correctly, we can bring forward the ordinance that's being worked on for discussion, first reading at the next meeting, creating a design review board, and to Mark's point, a couple volunteers right now, but we want to grow it. It would be more than just a committee that meets every once in a while, it will be empowered to make decisions, to make recommendations, and to oversee the Great Streets program. So then I would imagine we'd go to the gaslight, advertise there, advertise on our website, and try and recruit the most talented residents to work with us on this program. So, no objections? It's not my typical Sheena, like, if you're silent, I interpret that as yes. Are there any objections? Are we moving forward? Can I give them the green light to introduce us?
I do not have any objection.
Sounds like you've got a green light.
All right. Yes. Review of December events, I'll fly through this. The light-up Irvington Avenue, which is now Seaton Village, was very successful, that was on December 12th. The event coordinators said that there was roughly about 200 attendees, that they thought, and for the first-ever holiday event on Irvington Avenue, just great job to the soon-to-be Seaton Village Committee on that. And we received lots of positive comments from the neighborhood about the decorations and having the tree lighting, and kind of feeling like they were in the holiday spirit. Then we also had our first-ever South Orange menorah lighting in Spiota Park, which is fantastic, first meaning, at least one of the rabbis told me, for the 30 years he had been here, we never had a menorah lighting. Roughly 75 attendees, amazing jelly doughnuts from Kate and Abby's, and a special thanks to the public, especially to Congregation Bethel, Ohem Shalom Congregation, and Temple Shere Tefilo. They all contributed money for the donation of the menorah to the municipality. So basically, you know, that's their gift to us, and each year, I hope we'll continue doing that at the same time roughly as we do the holiday tree lightings around town. And also, First Night was a tremendous, tremendous success. Can't say enough about the First Night board members, the First Night President, Michael Goldberg, and several of newbies who joined First Night this year, both between South Orange and Maplewood. 750 to 1,000 attendees, I don't know the exact number. The majority of all the acts in the entire night was covered by sponsorships. Obviously, the village contributed $5,000, Maplewood covered the cost of all the police and employees that needed to be there, but the overall program was fully funded by sponsors, very generous sponsors. And so what the group is asking for, for those who attended, if you can go to firstnightmws.org, they do have a survey that's there for everybody who attended the event, and they're hoping to collect, excuse me, feedback to improve for next year. And I do think it's something we should continue supporting. I think having that back this year as an option for families and people with kids and, you know, whatever, was fantastic for the community, so I hope we can support it. South Orange Health and Fitness, I'll kick between myself and Trustee Schnell, but first weigh-in is on Thursday. As Alex mentioned earlier, we are pushing 125 contestants, and it happened almost instantaneously. We opened registration, and then we had to keep opening it and opening it, and so we think it's going to be pretty, pretty successful. No more sloppy joe-eating contests for me, I suppose.
That's a win for everybody.
I'm glad they didn't pull that photo up. And lastly, the Seaton Village Committee, as discussed in our closed session, we will be introducing a resolution renaming the Irvington Avenue Courtyard Advisory Committee into the Seaton Village Committee, and there will be added members to the roster for the next meeting. And I'm going to skip some, the last few bullet points, with the exception of, we do have two developers, local developers, who attended a development committee meeting to introduce themselves. They have, as a result of the rehabilitation designation, they've acquired close to, or they're under contract for roughly 1.3 acres of land on Irvington Avenue, and so right now, they're moving through the process of meeting some of our advisory committees, going through some of the research, coming to our development committee, and hopefully, we will see some proposals for development, and some new buildings, and something that's consistent with the surveys and outreach that the Market Research Center had done. And I'm pretty excited about that and ready to kick that process off. That's all I got. That was under 15 minutes. It was.
Thank you, Trustee Colm.
You are welcome.
Trustee Davis Ford?
We met on December the 15th, and some of the items that we had on our agenda have ended up on tonight's meeting as resolutions. One, which was sent from our committee to the Public Safety Committee, and that was the security alarm resolution. The other item that was in our committee that we talked about was looking at creating a resolution that we were all comfortable with, which was also on the agenda regarding the resolution initiated by the Coalition on Race. So that was something that we discussed fully and was also passed today in our meeting. The other things that we talked about was supporting, you know, supporting a resolution for sustainable funding for transportation improvements, that's something that I really, really want us to continue to keep on our agenda, because based on being a transit village, this is something that we really should rally behind. I think it's a great opportunity and time, and I think people would be receptive to doing, and really, what it's talking about is finding some way on a state level of revenue, which is generally at some type of tax, to fund a transportation fund that is so depleted. And this is a very good time, I think that people would be receptive to that, because the gas is so low, and it looks, it appears if you read the financial forecast, that this is a trend that may exist for some time. So anyway, I really will continue to keep that on our agenda to see how we can be more of an advocate to support this type of initiative to fund. And the other items that we talked about, we're still working on moving forward regarding our spring wellness campaign. We're still waiting to have an additional meeting on some of those items, so I'm going to save that for our next report, because that's going to be on our agenda this month. And then finally, we will be talking about some new initiatives. One of them that was requested to be put on our agenda by our village president. So that is my report, and...
Great. Thank you, Trustee Davis Ford. Trustee Levinson?
Yeah, just getting back to things that are happening in the police headquarters, part of the work that the architect is doing is that for 40 years, nothing has really been done from a maintenance perspective, and that was one of the major initiatives that we've asked the architect to come in and take a look, and propose some changes within the facility, as well as, we had a report done by professionals on how the various departments within the Police Department, Police Headquarters, interact with each other so that we have a better flow between the various departments, and make recommendations of how the layout should be within the building. We are moving forward, as mentioned before, we successfully relocated the dispatch function from its current location into a temporary location, without really any hitches. We expect to be in that temporary location for about two to three months. It's in the old court space. In the process, we are going to rehabilitate the old space by introducing new furniture, new walls, and ceiling, bringing it really up to the leading edge of what a facility should be. This includes all of the implementation, the IT implementations that we've been doing in our CAD RMS system, our voice recording, our 911 systems are now being integrated together into one facility, including a very successful installation of consolidating our various closed-circuit television systems, which both are within the PD itself, and as well as within and around the village. This too is another one of successful implementations, and now we can see all of the cameras on one large-screen display. In other areas, which I'm going to defer to Mark to talk about, and that is, we discussed at our finance committee meeting, moving forward with our website and what we need to do with the website. Even though it's the Finance and Technology Committee, we really have had very little to do with the website, and we do want to see it move forward, and we know now that we need to do a new RFP for certain things, and we wanted an update from Barry on where we stand with that, and how we're going forward, and how we're going to move with this, and get a new website back on track, for lack of a better word. And we'd like to have the, along with the Public Information Committee, work with the Technology Committee to get this done, so we have a clear direction of how we're going to do it and move forward. So, basically, what we've done is that we're no longer developing the new website, we're requested that a new RFP be put together so that we get another company in to redesign the website. The other part of it is to go back and make sure that the old website has recent content, so that we're going to update some of the content that's on that website in the interim. And we have to assign somebody who formally does that, does those updates, whether it's department heads turning the information over to one person and having it updated, but we have to bring that back up to date, because it's, several of the pages are more than behind. And on another topic, we have received, being the deadline was last Thursday, for alternative uses of Village Hall, we have had a discussion at the Finance Committee of making a recommendation, if in fact, we had feasible alternatives, that we go out and create a subcommittee, resident subcommittee of people who could do the analysis of comparing the costs, specifically, the cost of the alternative, to what we would do with Village Hall, if in fact, we were selling the current facility. And so that's, I guess, we have to go through the process of what we discussed before, of now moving forward and asking the respondents to give us some more detail to their reports. Do you want to say anything further on what we?
No. I think that basically, we're at a point where what we got, and we discussed earlier this evening in executive session, there's a lot of follow-up, a lot of additional information we need to get, and I think at that point, when we have all that information, I agree 100%, we need to, you know, fully vet the economic impacts of the proposals, but that has to be in comparison with the economic impact of keeping and renovating Village Hall, when we get those prices in, and then the alternative of, if we don't reoccupy Village Hall, then obviously, we have to have a location for our operations, and where is that going to be, and what the economic impact of that is. So I think those, all those pieces have to come together.
The other is that I've asked for additional dates for budget workshops, so that we can come to closure on that, and I'm assuming that the next meeting, we will have a bond ordinance for new capital, or at least the interim.
The early capital, right.
Correct. That's about it. So do we have, do we have potential dates, or you're going to send?
Well, I'll send out, what I'll look at is, and I'll follow up with CFO, I know he was in the process and just about done closing out the 2014 books, so then we'll get sort of those final totals, which are some of the numbers we need to populate into the budget. So I would look, you know, potentially, towards the end of this month, or certainly early February, I'll circulate either via doodle poll or some way to solicit everybody's availability, but certainly within the next month, so between now and that beginning, first two weeks of February.
I have a question. So, the idea of creating a committee, I don't think that that's recent, that's been discussed for five months. The issue that we hit was that every member of the Board of Trustees wanted to be on this working group, and so that's where we left it off at. I think everybody was on board with, we wanted to bring in experts, we wanted a different stakeholder group... stakeholder groups represented that we ultimately end up with as much information as possible in such a big decision, but we still don't have a working group because it would be the biggest working group in the history of ever. So at some point, we do have to make a determination if the village president, and rightfully so, is participating on this working group and from Mr. Rother's assessment, that means one trustee. We have six. We do have to make a decision who that person is going to be and the actual construct of this working group. And so I have sent my recommendations to the village president four months ago. I would suggest everybody do that, who you want and what skill set they're bringing to the table and allow him to make appointments immediately at the next meeting on who this working group is going to be because we do have information now. We're expecting some more and then work needs to be turned around very quickly because we have 60 days from when the bids are received and that's a short period of time in government speak.
I told the village administrator, it'd be unlikely because the working group's mostly going to have daytime meetings, it's going to be hard for me to make them unless they're going to do them at 8:00 AM, which so that people don't seem to like. So I said I'll withdraw my request to do it as long as I'm assured that I get all the information and that no decisions are made at this working group, which I know, even though it's a working group, there have been times in the past when decisions have been made at the working group level, which have not, even though they're not official decisions, they're decisions that impact the way things have moved forward. So I said I would drop out of it, but I just expect to be kept informed. So any day that there is a meeting, I would expect an update before the end of that day and not any later than that. And I think it's only fair that anyone who's not in the working group gets information on the same day and that we don't hear about it secondhand. And that would be my request.
Pretty reasonable.
And I don't want them to be public meetings. I don't want to have to notice them. Based on what we received, I imagine there's going to be recommendations on negotiations, numbers, et cetera, and so there's, that's not even an option to have a public meeting. What's that?
You're down to five trustees now.
Okay, five trustees. And so maybe, I do think, Mr. President, at the next meeting, you need to name this working group so that they can get started.
I would like to circulate a proposal, how you can do it, because it can be done. It's not perfect, but I'd like to circulate a proposal by email tomorrow, how all of you can participate.
Go for it.
Okay.
And one more thing that Howard missed is, hold on, let me remember, is that there will likely need to be a resolution at the next meeting for the, Howard, help me out, $18,000 for the data conversion? Is that what the budget was for that?
It's...
Or the proposed budget?
It is, yes. It is part of the capital, and that's why I asked Barry, next, our next meeting, that will be included in the capital budget.
In the capital budget? We're not pulling from the operating budget for right now for this? Okay.
It's all part of the CAD RMS system.
Okay, so we'll have a resolution at the next meeting for that? We don't need a resolution?
No, we have an ordinance that we have to put a bond ordinance.
We will do the ordinance first, then when the findings there, we'll do the resolution authorizing the contract with enforces.
Right.
Additional. And just for, it's to convert all the historic data from the old CAT system going back 30, 40 years into the new system so that the police have access, ready access in the current system.
Correct.
You know, name hits, prior arrest, prior address history, all the stuff that they wouldn't be able to do otherwise.
Do we have to wait for the ordinance to authorize that?
Yes.
We don't have it in our old budget?
Let me see what's existing in the current funding.
Ellen already answered.
So we do have to or we don't?
We have to wait.
All right.
Trustee Schnell.
Sure. So besides the regular activities that the Recreation and Cultural Arts Departments are working on, I want to call out one thing that's fairly significant and major. We pulled together representatives from various different domains to discuss maintenance. So one of the things that the department does an incredibly good job on, given the challenge and the difficulty of trying to manage various different recreational programs from the schools, from our towns. As you know, most of our fields are shared between municipal needs, school needs, and the problem is we keep them busy all the time and they rarely get a chance to stay, you know, sort of fallow so they can be renewed and repaired. And that's a continued issue. So what we're taking a look at right now through some leadership that Summit, the city of Summit, does a really nice job on, the Recreation Department, they've graciously come in to meet with us and share how they've done things and how we might work with it. But the good news is our department head, Kate Schmidt, has a very good relationship with their department head and they've come in and we actually pulled together, as I mentioned, various constituencies, including the department heads of Recreation for Maplewood, for South Orange, as well as the Board of Ed and various large users such as our Cougar sports teams. And we've had our initial meeting, it went very well in terms of conceptually discussing what we're going to look at. And the potential way of doing this is through a usage fee type of arrangement that in addition to the money that we have in our operating budget, that we would actually take a percentage of or a fee attached to every program that someone, any organization or individual would participate in, putting that money specifically aside for future maintenance. So we expect to be meeting probably every other week, starting in a couple of weeks in addition to that first meeting and addressing what can be a very challenging but good opportunity to keep our fields in the good shape that we want them to be. Not just sort of getting from season to season and year to year, but making sure that they get renewed and looking at long-term usage as well. In terms of the Public Information and Marketing Committee, again, that committee continues to meet and address various issues. One of the things I want to just call out this month, in a collaboration, we heard it from Matt Glass and Bob Zuckerman, working with SOFC, in terms of a calendar, there would be something that we would help them to form, but they would be responsible for. That would be a one place to look for various different organizations in terms of activities, events and meetings. So all our residents and organizations could know what's going on so that we can hopefully reduce conflicts. The other thing we're talking to, working with SOFC with, is on the wayfinding signs as well as the naming of our parking lots. I know some of us have been around for a long time, when you say have parking lot number six or nine or three, it has meaning, but very few people, unless you memorize that, really know what those numbers are. So we're going to try to address some naming schemes to help along the way as well as wayfinding to get around town. The other thing that we are currently doing an initiative with is in the Finance and IT Committee as well as Public Information Marketing, we are introducing several new applications, technology applications that will be, that do run or will be running on our platforms. And we're going at this rebranding process to name them. And then once they're live, one of the big issues is how do we promote it? How do we get people to know? We talked about SO Connect earlier as well as these other applications. So the committee is currently looking at it. And that can be extended and we are looking at promoting various things. We talked about getting news across to people. We mentioned using the gaslight, which as we know is one means, whether it's effective or not, is questionable, but it is one means that we know anybody that has a post office box or a mailbox will get it. But we're looking at all the various means to make sure we address as efficiently as possible to reach our entire population. So just a couple of things.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I would like to open the meeting up for public comments, if there's anybody who wishes to speak. Do you know where to go?
My name's Alyssa Aronson. I'm a longtime resident of this town. Good evening, Mayor Torby, trustees, Mr. Bull, Robert Casswell. Mayor Torby, I am going to go to town hall tomorrow and I'm going to ask for an OPA to find out if you are a resident of South Orange for one year.
I mean, all right. Like I said, I've been a resident since 2009, so that's more than one year.
If you live here, that's the question we need to understand, if you're living here.
I do live here.
Don't go back.
So yeah, you can file the OPA request. I don't know what document you'd be requesting. If there's some information that you want, you could ask for it here. Yeah, my long form.
Were you born in this country?
Voter registration.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, yeah. So yeah, feel free to OPA anything you like and that will confirm that I do indeed live in South Orange. Is there anybody else? Okay. Oh, one discussion item, traffic, home and pedestrian safety. Was there anything you would add on that?
Yeah, so that's a really long presentation, so I'm going to ask that it be added for discussion for the next meeting.
That's like, sounds like a great idea. All right, so unless there's anything else, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by trustee Levinson, seconded by trustee Collins in favor. All right, good night.